Good evening. The formal meeting of the Board of Education for February 23rd, 2016 is called to order. Director Buell? I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the PPS Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Director Curler, Chair Curler, is absent tonight. I'd like to especially extend our welcome to all the students in the audience. It's always great to see students and we have a lot of student testimony this evening. Also, just a reminder for those of you who have signs, please make sure not to raise them above your head to obstruct the view of the people behind you. We have our superintendent's report. First off, Superintendent Smith, would you like to present your report?
I would. And I'll start. For many years, we've been fortunate to have the generous support of the Portland Five Centers for the Performing Arts, do things with Portland Public Schools. This month, the Portland Five is bringing three amazing performances to our students and introducing them to music. Last week, the Turtle Island Quartet performed for students at Siton Elementary. This is a Grammy Award-winning string quartet that blends classical aesthetic with jazz, bluegrass, and East Indian musical themes. Tomorrow, Black Violin will perform for 2,700 students from our Title I schools at the Schnitzer Concert Hall. Kevin Sylvester and Willner Baptiste are doing their own brand of rethinking classical music through a hip-hop lens, and this will be really exciting tomorrow. In March, we'll have Mariachi Soul de Mexico performing their special brand of mariachi music with a classical musical spin. So, we just want to thank our partners at the Portland Five, and it's really wonderful to end up having this kind of opportunity for students to experience music and artists who are visiting here in Portland. So, thank you for that partnership. Thirty Portland Public Schools participated in student-led activities to end social isolation in middle school on National No One Eats Alone Day. This event came the week after many of our K5s and K8s took part in National No Name Calling Week. And I'm just going to say, Portland Public Schools is a leader in this effort nationally, and our schools have responded with student-led efforts on anti-bullying and antisocial isolation campaigns. And it makes me proud to see what work our students are doing, and I do feel like they are also setting the tone for adults in this community as well. So, students, thank you for your leadership in this area. I'm going to say, we want to call out, thank you. There's similar kinds of efforts in terms of trying to manage civility in the blogosphere. So, this is also, there's a whole thing with students about be kind online. We're looking, again, when I say students are modeling, where students are modeling, how do you take leadership in respectful civil discourse when you're online? So, again, I'm calling out a great appreciation for students leading this effort. And interestingly, Wellam at Week is also taking up the charge too, which I find interesting but encouraging, so I think that's pretty cool. PPS is joining agencies who are coming out about potentially dangerous levels of toxins in the air due to glass manufacturing. You're all watching this in the news. Several Portland neighborhoods, some near Portland Public School buildings, have been reporting toxins in the air. PPS has been really entering as a partner to help facilitate community involvement, to help communities come together and get educated on what's happening, and then we are, and to be involved as a partner in helping to find solutions. So, we joined with Multnomah County Health Department, the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, Oregon Health Authority to host community meetings at Cleveland High School and the Tubman Building in northeast Portland. We have also been doing air quality testing inside of our schools. The testing results have come back from six of the 10 sites. So far, all have shown non-detectable levels for both arsenic and cadmium in the indoor air samples. Results from the remaining four schools come back this week. We will continue to be a partner in trying to provide the space and coordinate the forums for engaging in conversation as the state and the regulating agencies look for solutions. So, thank you all for participating in that and being, we've had great turnouts at these, and just, we really want to support the activism of people looking for answers. So, thank you for being part of that with us. Metropolitan Learning Center took on the health of our planet last Saturday. MLC students and teachers organized and pulled off a half-day workshop about climate issues held at the offices of the wind energy company Vestas. The workshop was called ClimateCon 2016 and included presentations by students. Director Rosen shared remarks as one of the keynote speakers, and Sunnyside Environmental Students showed a short animated film they produced about liquefied natural gas. We're proud of MLC students and teachers for their initiative on taking on this crucial international topic. I'm going to show you a short video from ClimateCon, and then, Mike, if you want to add any comments, give you an opportunity to see the video.
I never really was completely aware that climate change was a really big issue, but it actually, it turns out that our whole world could change, and that's really scary.
I mean, it's an opportunity for students to talk about and learn about climate change and how they can take action.
I think it's really great that we're doing this. I'm really proud of us.
We decided that we were going to hold a climate conference about climate change all around the world.
The air in some cities in China is so polluted that breathing it is a serious safety hazard.
When they were studying the pollution in China, one thing they realized is what the connection is between the way they live and aggravating that problem.
Everyone can make a difference, and it's really important to take that first step.
But it's all about the students, and I think the more you get them together, you give them the responsibility to talk about the issues and what they're going to do about it. That's what we need to do. That's 21st century education.
Because it's the world we're going to live in eventually, and, well, we are living in it, but...
Yeah, it's the world we're growing up in.
And if it, if it's like rapidly changing to something worse, then it's not going to be very fun.
Just thank you to the MLC parents and the students and the teachers. I mean, they got this together pretty quickly. They were great. These were all sixth graders, and the presentations were really incredible, well-presented. They even had a crew, their own crew, that was doing video. But I also want to thank John Isaacs, our video crew, and Christine Miles, because you guys got together like in two days and went out, and it was great because you captured some really cool things. So, they're excited about doing it again next year and bringing in more schools. So, it was really very inspirational. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. So, also, across the district right now, schools are holding open houses and information sessions for students who are transitioning to kindergarten, sixth or ninth grade. We do this every year to give people an opportunity to get to see our buildings and see where they may be transitioning to continue their career in PPS. So, we have an example of a video that was made for Woodlawn's open house that we thought we'd share with you, just to give you a sample.
Hi, Isaiah. Hi, Isaac. Come on in. Hey, Riley. Yep, step over our puddle. Hi, Zalea, how are you? Hey, tomorrow's a late.
Principal Andrea Porter-Lopez welcomes students to Woodlawn, where students begin each day with a nourishing breakfast. It's all part of a supportive environment that starts in pre-kindergarten.
I think these tickets really go strong.
Education launches early at Woodlawn with an onsite pre-kindergarten program. Learning about classroom expectations and the daily routine helps prepare students for the future.
Yeah, it definitely gives these kids a start to their education, kids who might normally not be able to go to preschool before they start kindergarten. It gets them set up for being able to be in a classroom setting and be successful in kindergarten next year.
Woodlawn is evolving with its students and the times. The school boasts an integrated science and tech program called STEAM. It's a blend of science, technology, engineering, art, and math.
What we're really pushing for is taking what we may think as unattainable, like math might be too hard or science too hard, but we are going to make it so that they can learn about how to design, how to be innovative, how to be creative, how to be, solve problems in our world, and also work together, which is sort of part of the whole STEAM project.
This day, students are taking part in a Google expedition. It's a virtual field trip that takes students all over the world. Woodlawn is a STEAM school with a focus on the planets.
And then, I went into outer space in a hot air balloon. We went up, 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 and then it popped, and then I fell down.
But my favorite part about it was when we were like going to like see the, the space, and then we, I saw Earth.
At Woodlawn, students learn to use both their left brain and right brain in and out of the classroom. The STEAM curriculum helps make them lifelong learners.
Remember, tomorrow is our spelling test. What should you do?
Practice!
Practice your spelling test.
A tight-knit community is also a hallmark at Woodlawn, where a dedicated PTA, a family community engagement specialist, and business partners help support students and families.
We really embrace the entire family, not just the student. It isn't where you just send your child off for eight hours during the day. We actually become involved with the entire family, and the neighborhood is involved with all the businesses that are here, as well as just in the day-to-day interaction that happens.
I've discovered that there are amazing roots in the neighborhood, and we have students here whose parents came to Woodlawn, their aunties and uncles came to Woodlawn, and their grandparents came to Woodlawn, and sometimes it's even deeper than that.
And it's these strong community ties at Woodlawn that keep families coming back generation after generation.
Okay, I just want to keep showing you some images of other things going on around the district. The next group of slides are from our International Youth Leadership Conference. This was the fourth year of this conference. It took place at Portland State University this year. Hundreds of our emerging bilingual students gather. It's an opportunity to network with fellow students, educators, and local language minority leaders. We have local workshops, workshops on leadership and college and career readiness. It's been a really exciting conference each year, so congratulations and thank you. There are young people who are part of actually putting this together, who do a phenomenal job of putting together an outstanding conference. So, just congratulations and thank you. Roosevelt students marked Trayvon Martin's birthday with a school-wide day of action to address racial profiling. The students called on everyone in the school, including teachers, to participate in Hoodies Up Day on February 5th by wearing hoodie sweatshirts to call attention to racial profiling. Leading the day, the students came up with six projects demonstrating support of the Black Lives Matter movement, including writing to their teachers and asking them to participate, and organizing a panel of community activists to discuss their experiences with racism and what they're doing to combat it. And students are hoping to make this an annual day that marks Trayvon Martin's birthday. So, Oregon Health Sciences University and Benson High School unveiled a new Student Wellness Center on February 11th with the Honorable Barbara Roberts helping with the celebration. Benson Wellness Center is located on the high school campus. It'll provide students with high-quality healthcare and help them develop relationships with healthcare providers that support success in school and life. This is staffed by faculty and residents from the OHSU Department of Family Medicine, as well as specialists from Multnomah ESD and Multnomah County Health Department, and the Western Psychological and Counseling Services Center. This is really exciting. This has been a long time in the making with a lot of volunteers and private fundraising, as well as the Benson staff to make it come together. So, really exciting to finally have the moment of its launch. So, congratulations to everyone who made this happen. We had Lunar New Year celebrations at a number of our schools with stunning dance and cultural performances. The photos you see here are at Harrison Park Celebration. This one was launched several years ago by Community Agent Qui Wu-Wen with support from Principal John Walden to recognize and honor the Asian heritage families who are attending Harrison Park. So, and I know we had these at a number of schools throughout the district, and people who have gone have said they're just magnificent and really wonderful celebrations. So, thank you to everyone who helped make that happen. So, I'm happy to report that master planning for the modernization of Benson, Lincoln, and Madison High Schools is underway, thanks to our School Building Improvement Bond, which was approved in 2012. And here you're seeing the examples of the design workshops. Lincoln held its first design workshop, and Benson's first design workshop is a week away. Madison has just launched its first master planning committee, and it will be meeting starting February 16th. It's been really gratifying to see the number of community members who are engaged and involved in this process. And even though master planning has just begun, the actual construction of Benson, Lincoln, and Madison is contingent on a passage of a future bond. It's been great to see how the bond work is serving our community. Crews have demolished the Fabian Building. If you have not driven by there, it's really impactful to see the vacant lot where once Fabian stood. But this is in preparation for the new construction of Fabian K8 along with Concordia University. I know you've been hearing, this is an incredible partnership between PPS and Concordia that will eventually house the school, as well as the Concordia's College of Education, and healthcare, a health center. There's like a whole set of services that will be part of this building, and we're really excited about it. But it is underway. The other thing, what you see here is Portland firefighters who are able to use the building to practice cutting open a roof prior to its demolition. So, we're also trying to use our buildings in all phases as also learning opportunities. Next set of slides you will see are from our Community Transition Program, who teamed up with our Transportation and Maintenance Departments to learn basic auto-repair skills and how to change spark plugs, air filters, and tires, as well as how to jump-start a car. This secretary in the program came up with the idea after a student in the program asked to work on her car. She reached out to the Transportation Department, who supplied a vehicle and instructors to work with the students, and went ahead and provided space for the lesson. So, this is the kind of collaboration and creativity that leads to great opportunities for kids. So, thank you for all involved in that one, for making it happen. And then, finally, here's another great product of our capital bond. Because of the modernization construction at Roosevelt, the high school has not had use of its auditorium. So, Theater Director Joe Lane from Roosevelt and Lincoln Theater Director Jim Perrinboom joined forces to put on a joint musical of Grease. So, we'll end the report tonight with a brief clip of this, which will start in March. It runs March 3rd through the 5th, and then March 10th through the 12th.
Hi, I'm Jim Perrinboom, and I'm the theater director at Lincoln High School.
My name is Joe Strum Lane, and I work at Roosevelt High School. And I'm the director of Grease, the co-production between Lincoln and Roosevelt.
To my knowledge, we've never had a Westside school and an Eastside school partnered on any kind of production.
But the process really started with, you know, not having a theater. Roosevelt's, of course, going under this, undergoing this transformation and construction.
My name is Clements Park. I'm a senior at Lincoln High School.
All right. My name is Charlie Hamblin. I'm from Roosevelt, and I am playing the part of Danny Suko.
In essence, when we tried to cast, we tried to cast as diversified as we could and as many ways as we could. And so, you'll see Roosevelt and Lincoln students in both casts.
But with Roosevelt, it's really cool because we get to just kind of have this whole new community introduced to us, and we see that they're kind of already a community themselves, but together we get to kind of make a new community.
It's been actually a lot of fun to be, being able to meet like a bunch of new people who you usually wouldn't be around and getting to make lots of new friends.
I mean, I came into this knowing, you know, the stereotypes between both Roosevelt and Lincoln, the differences that we have, and I think we were all able to get past those and realize that we're all just teenagers who go to high school, who do theater.
Well, this is my first play in high school, so I'm going to take away the experience of theater in general, as well as like the hard work ethic that it takes to do rehearsals every day and all the friendships that I've made.
Everyone knows what Grease is, and so I'm glad that we get to do our own rendition, and it's just, like I said, a fun atmosphere in that we get to really just invest ourselves in these characters and show people that, like, the songs, the dances that we do, which just makes everyone get up and do it with us.
We have been working on getting guest artists for every night of the show. We are really excited. We'll have a cast member from Grimm one night.
It's Lincoln and Roosevelt's production of Grease.
Got it.
I'm in Grease. It's pretty cool. You should come watch it on March 3rd.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Smith. We will move on to our student testimony. Ms. Houston, are there any students signed up this evening?
Yes, we have eight. And our first two speakers are Zola Redman-Racklin and Mia Orzag.
Come on up. Hi, please state your name before you speak, and then keep an eye on the lights in front of you. It will, you have three minutes for your testimony. It will go to yellow when you have one minute left, and then we'll cut you off.
I'm Zola Redman-Racklin. I've been at Creative Science School since kindergarten, and I'm currently an eighth grader. At CSS, we started out as a really small community, and I feel like with a really small community, we had a great sense of comfort with one another and a great sense of like trust between students and teachers. And I feel like it's really important because we've been passing that on even as we've grown, and we all still kind of have that feeling of comfort, and we all feel like we can trust each other, and we all have that feeling of family and community, which is really important when we're working in groups or working with each other, presenting stuff, because you don't feel like you're going to be judged, or you're going to be like hated upon because of something that you have said wrong, or something that you might not agree upon with someone else. And we've been able to pass this on through different classes, so teaching it as we are mixing with other classes, or as we mix directly with younger children, which I find really fantastic, because we get to kind of work with younger children within our school because we're K through 8. And we get to pass this on directly, and we get to teach them that having this sense of community with other students and this sense of caring is really important for when you are working with other people and when you trust other people.
Thank you for coming to share that.
I'm Mia Orzag. I am an eighth-grade student at CSS as well. And another benefit of the K through 8 school is that, like she was saying, close community. We get to, one, work with younger grades, and we also develop strong connections and problem-solving skills with different grades and people of different ages and ethnicity. And we have been working a lot on problem-solving and working in groups. One of the things that we've been doing in mid-level is on late starts, we get random groups, and we have to build something or make a presentation and work together with either random people or people we've chosen ourselves. And it helps to become closer to the people that you go to school with, so it's more of a comfortable learning experience. Another thing that we've been doing is community service, and that's problem-solving and working in groups. That leads into, community service is in a leadership class, and leadership is one of our electives. And the great thing about specifically our mid-level at Creative Science is we don't have very many choices, but we get to choose our own electives. So, there is something that everyone would like to do. It's a more open place for people to express themselves.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ashley Mu Julian and Matthew Filippi.
I think there's a problem. I think we have two different kids from two different schools here.
That's fine. Ashley and Matthew?
Hi, my name's Ashley. I'm from Cesar Chavez School, and I'm an eighth grader there. What I like about the inquiry by design project is how it's difficult and it's challenging. It can be interpreted in many ways depending on how you analyze it, and the more you read it, your perspective changes, and so does your interpretation. Because as you annotate while you're reading it, you get to look back and see what you thought of it then, and then the more you read it, you could see what you think of it now, and your perspective changes throughout, the more you read it. And it keeps you engaged due to the fact of how important it is to understand it, because it's written in a different way. Not all books are written that way, in the same manner. And then, it's different because it opens your eyes to different forms of writing and understandings, because, well, I guess you have to look at it through different ways because of the writing. With the books that, like History Alive textbooks, it gives you the information then and there, but with the inquiry by design project, you have to really think about what it's trying to tell you. And after reading it, we talk about each other, we talk about it with each other to understand what people our age know about it. And we have student-led discussions to show like our different perspectives of it. And then, it makes you want to write like that someday, in the same writing.
Hi, I'm Matthew Filippi. Dear Superintendent Smith and School Board, thank you for letting me talk tonight. I'm an eighth grader at West Sylvan Middle School and live in the Bratimouth, south-of-Pattin area. I'm speaking for the handful of West Sylvan eighth graders here in front of you tonight who must attend a different high school than all of the rest of our classmates next fall if Scenario 2B is approved. I plan to go to Lincoln High School, where my brother and sister went to school, and I've played Lincoln sports year-round since I was eight. No one should have to go through what is happening to us. We've been singled out, embarrassed, even pulled off classes last week to be told we should plan for two high schools, two high schools, because a decision won't be made until April. Eighth grade is supposed to be a great year. The stress this is causing for us is making it terrible. Although I would not like it, I think I could understand the reasons for sending us away if we're solving a big problem. But it seems clear from our small numbers, moving us won't make a difference for the overcrowding at Lincoln. So, why would you do this to us? Look us in the eye and promise us you're solving a overcrowding problem next year. Look us in the eye and promise us you're solving a overcrowding problem next year by moving such a small number of kids just a few months before we start high school. You're the adults who are supposed to be looking out for us. You're the ones who need to make sure any plan put in place makes things better for kids and schools, not worse. How does excluding a small group from most of the classmates, programs, and coaches we have known for years right before we begin high school make things better for us or anyone else? Tonight, you can stop this. Please allow us to remain with the rest of our friends at West Sylvan as we transition to Lincoln next fall. Thank you.
Thank you. So Matthew, I just wanted to let you know that the superintendent is considering the proposal right now. And then she will make a recommendation to the board sometime in the next several weeks. And her recommendation might be a little bit different than the proposal that she got from our committee that's been working on this. Then she will give it to us and we will consider it and we will think about all the testimony that we've heard from kids and adults all over the district and then we'll make a decision. That's the process. Thank you.
Next, we have Tavi Kittredge and Eric Jacobson.
Good evening. My name is Eric Jacobson and I'm a fifth grader at Ainsworth Elementary. My twin brother, my brother, and my brother in second grade and I are all in the Spanish Immersion Program. I want to start by saying how lucky we know we are. We have been able to learn a second language at our neighborhood school and still receive the same programming options. Learning a second language has helped challenge me in the classroom and helped me understand people from different cultures better. My parents told me that choosing to enter my brothers and I into the lottery for Spanish Immersion was a difficult choice because as much as they wanted us to learn a second language, they didn't want us to lose a normal elementary school experience. The over thirty-year history of the Ainsworth Spanish Immersion Program gave my parents the reassurance they needed that my core education would not need to be compromised for immersion and the longstanding successful history at Ainsworth allowed them to make that decision comfortably. I have loved my time at Ainsworth with both my immersion classmates and many friends in the English program. I'm able to walk to my friends' houses to hang out or work on homework and I'm very grateful for the experience. It makes me really sad to think about Spanish immersion moving to East Sylvan. For one, I don't know many parents like mine might take that choice with a new location. Also, if the program is put in a school that doesn't have the space or population numbers for the same programming, many parents will probably choose their neighborhood programs over immersion and the program will probably not thrive. I ask that you all really consider both the short and long-term issues when making your decisions. Will putting Spanish immersion at East Sylvan accomplish all your needs? Will you be able to offer the same programming with a smaller population? If you can't, why is it fair to tell kids that because they are speaking another language, they shouldn't get the same things their neighborhood school provides? Should East Sylvan property be used to open a neighborhood program to solve longer-term issues? Finally, I want to say that during this process, my parents and I have learned about the inequities of programs across the city. I can't understand why certain schools in the public school system get more specials and electives. Please do not tear down good programs to make things more equal. Make programs better and make sure all kids have access to good quality education. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tavi Kittredge. Like Matthew who spoke earlier, I'm an eighth grade student at West Sylvan Middle School and I went to Bradamile Elementary. If the current boundary plan comes into effect, I would be moved from going to Lincoln High School next year to Wilson High School. I understand why people believe this is necessary. Lincoln is running out of room for all of its students. Although according to PPS guidelines, its size is about ideal for programming and something needs to be changed. The solution that D-BRAC has proposed is to move about thirty students, myself included, as less than two percent of the future Lincoln student body and under ten percent of the eighth grade, our effect on overcrowding will be minuscule. This makes less of an impact than the kids who would call in sick every day at Lincoln. The only reason I can think of to propose this is to make it look like something is being shifted without angering any big group. I don't like feeling like a victim. I don't like the dread and stress that settle over me every time I start to think of the future. I don't like how many times I have cried thinking about having to go to Wilson, although I'm sure it's a good school. Bradamile is not an enclosed community. We've grown roots at West Sylvan. Pulling up these roots would hurt. This doesn't just affect the kids you would move. I don't like watching my friends struggle with this next to me. I hear about how they didn't get any sleep last night because they are worried about what will happen next year if their friends are taken away. I've seen them go through so much anxiety and depression and I worry what will happen if their support is ripped away. The first half year of sixth grade was one of the hardest of my life. My old friends had found new interests and new friends and I was stuck alone. There were days I barely talked to anyone. Eventually, I got so lonely, I asked a nice girl in my block class if I could eat lunch with her. She said yes. Now she and my friends are my closest friends. It's taken outdoor school, bad teachers, crying at sleepovers, and sudden confession over texts to get the sort of trust we have now. This is not just the sort of thing I can just pick up at another school. I don't want to find out if I even can. This feels like a tragedy to me. Forecasting for Lincoln was today. I used to look forward to it. I can't think about it anymore. Do you realize I have to forecast for two high schools? Do you realize how much I'm stressing about just forecasting for one? I've spent so much time researching IB. Now I'm going to have to spend so much time researching AP too. Right after this is my last basketball practice of the season. I'm so close to my teammates and I've gotten to know the high school coach. Today may be the last Lincoln basketball practice I ever get to have. This decision has turned all my security in school, sports, and friends into so many questions and the answers are coming so late. Please make a decision. Please just let us go on with our friends and the lives we have built.
Lastly, we have Maya Halli and Roman Hernandez.
Roman Hernandez will be speaking in Spanish. He's chosen to do so and his mother has asked that I translate. So I'm not sure if you're gonna have him go first or second. Why don't you go first, Roman?
Okay. Hola, mi nombre es Roman Hernandez y mi escuela es Ainsworth. Por favor, no me quiten de mi escuela porque quiero aprender en mi idioma español. Yo soy muy orgulloso que hablo en mi idioma nativo. Y no quiero dejar a mis amigos y mis clases especiales en Ainsworth. Gracias.
Gracias, usted.
My name is Yamada Torres-Matson. Hi, my name is Roman Hernandez and my school is Ainsworth. Please do not remove me from my school because I want to learn in my Spanish language. I am very proud to speak in my native language. I do not want to leave my friends and my specials at Ainsworth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hola, me llamo Maya Halli. Hello, my name is Maya Halli and I'm a senior at Lincoln High School where I continue my studies as a Spanish immersion student. Growing up in the fairly homogeneous community of the West Hills, the Spanish immersion program has allowed me to learn about and interact with people of different cultural and socioeconomic backgrounds. Learning Spanish has given me the tools to not only communicate with a highly diverse range of people, but also to gain a more well-rounded perspective of the world around me. I highly value studying another language and the many cultures it encompasses and know the value of continuing the program for all the current and future immersion students, both native and non-native speakers. I was horrified to learn about the proposal to force an isolation of the Spanish immersion program to a location that would not work for the program, disrupts all the students and teachers in it, and with enough students staying behind at the school they know and love to potentially collapse the funding for a Spanish immersion that is uprooted. From kindergarten through high school, Spanish immersion students are first and foremost Ainsworth students, West Sylvan students, and Lincoln students. The learning we do is shared as a community and enriches the cultural awareness of all students and families. Some highlights of the connected, integrated culture of the whole school for me have been learning and performing samba routines, making the traditional Spanish dish paella with Don José and studying a study abroad and homestay program with Senior Brady. The petition on your desk is a rejection of Proposals 2A and 2B. About 500 supporters have signed this petition to support the 1,000 and plus students whose education would be disrupted, including the Spanish immersion students whose education would not only be disrupted, but downgraded, isolated, and potentially destroyed. Allow us to help Chapman overcrowding in a way that does more good than harm, not more harm than good. I have learned that there is a growing group of lower socioeconomic students and native speakers in the program. Do we really want to pull out the rug from underneath so many students, including such a vulnerable population? I have hope that the final decision by Superintendent Smith and the school board will maintain sensitivity toward all student communities. I am also submitting a stack of letters from parents and other students that echoes these sentiments. I feel truly honored to speak on behalf of a program that has guided my educational experience and fostered a passion to be a part of the greater world. Gracias.
Alright, thank you all. Tonight, we also have our student board representatives report. Katie?
Thank you. I just wanna, I just wanna say thank you for all the students who testified tonight. Your testimonies were very inspiring. So last week, at the City Club of Portland's Friday Forum, one of the Super SAC members and Jefferson Civic Scholars was a panelist. Alima Bradley and other panelists spoke regarding about what city club's focus should be over the next 100 years. Her thoughts seem to be very well-received by the club and I am proud to see our students taking on leadership opportunities. It has also been brought to my attention that the district was fifty substitutes short yesterday. Apparently, in some schools, specialists or specialist substitutes have been covering classrooms because there hasn't been enough subs. Because of this, students have not been able to get their study specials such as library PE, art, music, or in some cases, special education services. This is very concerning and I hope PPS is trying to find a solution to help, to help solve our sub shortage. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, public comment. Ms. Houston, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do. We have eight. And our first two speakers, Holly Ingram and Drew Carpenter.
My name is Drew Carpenter and I have two children in the Ainsworth Spanish Immersion Program. My comments tonight are about 2B and the proposed immersion program move. As odd as this feels to specify, I should add that I am a white male and not a member of the historically underserved community. I deeply believe, however, that I am allowed to care about the benefits of diversity and the well-being of the friends I've made at Ainsworth. Everything I say tonight is based on my own research as a concerned parent, reading publicly available documents. As measured by PPS's own numbers, 24.6% of the Ainsworth Spanish Immersion Program students are designated as historically underserved. That is 77 children. That makes our program one of the highest concentrations of historically underserved students on the entire West Side. Our program's historically underserved population represents 80% of the total historically underserved population at Ainsworth based on PPS October 2015 enrollment data. In the case of 2B, it is my contention that the vetting required by PPS's own policies did not occur in the 48 hours D-BRAC had after January 26 to consider the final 2B proposal. From mid-January, when moving the immersion program was first raised as a possibility to the time D-BRAC voted, I have not been able to find any evidence in the public record that D-BRAC recognized that disproportionately impacting the historically underserved was an outcome of 2B. Specifically, not in the online videos of D-BRAC meetings, nor in the West Side Subcommittee presentation on January 26, nor the final D-BRAC proposal submitted to the superintendent. If they did, there is literally no discussion of that fact and the potential implications on the record. That is a clear violation of PPS's racial educational equity policy and racial equity lens requirements, both of which are included as key pillars in D-BRAC's founding charter. Additionally, it appears that 2B intrudes on PPS's own language immersion policy, which is outside the scope of boundary proposals. SACET's 2014 recommendations thoughtfully wrestle with some of the challenges we currently face as a school, noting, quote, "We are concerned that co-locating immersion and neighborhood programs in the same building has resulted in resource imbalances in the past," but goes on to express concern that splitting schools, quote, "could also exacerbate segregation by shifting many native language speakers to a handful of schools." SACET's work to develop the careful framing of those tensions took place over the course of 20 months. Yet after a mere 48 hours of consideration by D-BRAC and absolutely no discussion in the public record, 2B comes down on the side of choosing against the neighborhood co-location of immersion programs and discards SACET's concerns about segregation. Starting with the meeting in January, I've watched every minute of the videos. I believe well-intentioned D-BRAC members had an insufficiently clear evaluation framework and were unfairly constrained by unrealistic timelines at the end of their process. Despite the important work accomplished along the way, this undermined their final proposal. On behalf of all of the communities that will undergo boundary reviews in the near future, I would like to respectfully request a full and publicly transparent review of the rush process that led to 2B. In addition, I ask that the results of this review be used to make changes to the D-BRAC policy and values framework to ensure future boundary proposals fully comply with D-BRAC's own charter and the existing equity policies of Portland Public Schools.
That's alright, you can finish.
Just one more sentence, I swear. Let's be honest. After 14 months and dozens of meetings, this never should have happened to anyone. It's not okay, but it's not too late. You can fix it. Please. Our expressed values need to be aligned with our proposed actions. Thank you.
So, good evening, everyone. Members of the Board, Superintendent Smith, PPS staff, and fellow community members. My name is Holly Ingram and I'm the president of the PTA at Riki Elementary and also a proud PPS employee. We are all witnessing a trying time in our district as we wait in anticipation of Superintendent Smith's recommendation on redrawing boundaries and your ultimate decision as a Board. We appreciate how responsive the Board has been to questions arising in the community. Incrementally, we are observing more and more groups across the West Side now gathering in support of the framework of Scenario 2B. It sets forward, but with some adjustments, for all the schools. This was reassuring to see. Previously fractured communities are now coming together and talking like neighbors. We all are about solutions that we can live with and make our district stronger in the long run. Out of deep concern for our children, lots of speculation, things planning behind the scenes, some nasty finger pointing, it's now time for that to be reined in. A collective hope of light has come to the end of the tunnel. We are gravitating toward an agreement around B2, which, of course, was ultimately recommended by D-BRAC after extensive community input, third-party research, and district support. The support is growing as people see how B2 is a foundation for strong schools of all students. Great neighborhoods that prioritize walkability, community cohesion, and outstanding dedicated facilities for our focus programs that enable them to grow and thrive. We look forward to working with you on the long-term solution based on this foundation. This also builds into creative enhancements that serve underserved students and well as its supports closing the achievement gap. So please know, we are not just one. We are not just one voice or one school. We are 2,000 strong. We continue to grow by the day and build a consensus and build a coalition. We no longer are vying for your time. We are going to be working together to solve the riddles within 2B. You will hear our voice. We are coming. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Anna Cox and Sholly McFarland.
Hi, I'm Anna Cox. So I gave you guys a little handout right here. And I'm here tonight to talk, it's kind of a different topic than what other people have been talking about, because I wanted to talk about my neighborhood and the elementary schools in this area. And we're facing a completely different issue than what the schools on the West Side are or the majority of schools that are being changed with the new boundary change proposals. I'm talking about the schools that feed into Lane Middle School or Will with the new changes. When Arlita converts from K through eight to a K through five, it will feed into Lane Middle School and then Woodmere and Whitman. Even though there's so much talk about how schools and PPS are growing, none of the schools in our area are growing. And two of the schools, Woodmere and Whitman, experience kind of unprecedented decline in enrollment. If you look between the two of them, just between October 2014, the count that they did on October 1st and this last year, they lost over 70 students between the two of them. And that's a pretty significant drop in enrollment. And so all of the schools in that area are either under-enrolled or on the brink of under-enrollment. And the plan that was created was created with the expectation that Woodmere and Whitman were either going to maintain or grow. And in actuality, they experienced unprecedented decline. So the current proposals for boundary changes didn't anticipate that these schools would lose as many students as they did. In fact, none of the schools met their predictions. And if we have another year in which we lose even 20 more students, we're going to have more than one under-enrolled school in the area. So we're hoping that in the coming months, we'll receive more attention. Superintendent Smith will recommend a plan that creates right-sized schools in our area of Town Two. When the DIBRAC committee meets to review the East Side boundaries, we hope that members will include us, as we think that there are so many options for our area. Schools can be shifted around to balance enrollment. We could have a focus option in our area. We could, you could move, just redraw boundary lines. And I think nobody wants to be faced with closing schools in our area within a couple years, right after these big changes went through. And so, just because we were overlooked. So again, I just wanted to come here tonight to increase your awareness of what's going on in our area, make sure that you know that the growth is really uneven in Portland. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Deidra Pine. I have two children currently enrolled in the fourth and fifth grades at the Creative Science School. Both of my children started CSS in kindergarten. At CSS, we have been listening carefully to the debates surrounding boundary changes as well as proposed changes to the K8 model. We have also been listening to the concerns of our neighbors. Our principal, as well as community members, have been reaching out to the other schools in our area. First and foremost, as a community, we support the neighborhood schools that surround CSS and hope to find solutions that work for everyone. It is because our principal recently completed the focus option review paperwork for the district that we decided now would be a good time to address the board and the community. First, to dispel a few myths about CSS, entry is lottery-based and weighted according to the district's priorities, that are sibling preference and families with lower incomes. It is our community's opinion that the sibling preference ensures greater participation in focus option programs by lower-income families. Since the district provides no transportation to our school, decreasing the number of drop-off and pickups at one school for a family is essential. No essays or other steps are needed to enter the lottery. In fact, the requirement to attend an open house or a school tour has been eliminated in order to decrease the barriers to enter the school. There are no mandatory volunteer hours. However, parents are welcome to volunteer in the school and encouraged to do so when they can. Also, there is no pressure for families to donate money to the PTA, and we have no foundation. Now about our philosophy. Students are encouraged to be independent thinkers, learners, and problem solvers. Our students develop and demonstrate the ability to create questions, formulate solutions, and apply the results throughout their lives. Though our name might imply otherwise, CSS does not focus specifically on the sciences. The science in our name refers to the school's approach of using the scientific method as a teaching tool. The scientific method consists of collection of data through observation and experimentation, and the formulation and testing of hypotheses and predictions. And as our name does imply, we do this creatively. At CSS, our teachers use a constructivist educational philosophy and the storyline approach in every classroom, kindergarten through eighth grade. We have been a school with this focus in PPS for 20 years. CSS moved into the Clark Building in 2008. However, this school year is the first school year that we have been the sole occupiers of the building. We are a community of parents, students, teachers, and staff, working together to create a supportive and engaging learning environment. I also realize this takes place in every neighborhood school across Portland. Parents have chosen CSS for various reasons. Creative Science does not claim to be superior. What we have offered for the past 20 years is an alternative option to the traditional approaches found in neighborhood schools.
Thank you.
My name is Beth Cantrell. My name is Beth Cantrell. I also have a fourth grader at CSS, and an incoming kindergartner this fall, and another one in the fall of 2020. Our families started at CSS in second grade through the lottery system. Equity is very important to us at CSS. Prior to the district's efforts to improve equity at focus option schools, Creative Science began reaching out to families enrolled in the Head Start program that was housed in our building. We provided information about the program as well as helped them navigate the lottery system. In 2014, on our own initiative, CSS worked with the PPS Office of Enrollment and Transfer to reserve a number of kindergarten lottery slots specifically for the Head Start students in our building. This year, we reached out to organizations such as the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon and the Latino Network, and distributed information describing how to access our school throughout Portland. We are hoping to improve the diversity at CSS. We recognize the problem, and we understand that something must be done to correct it. Creative Science is located on southeast 92nd, between Stark and Division. As the only focus school east of 82nd, we believe CSS is uniquely located near many of the district's historically underserved and ELL families that we are trying to reach. And at the same time, we're leaving overcrowding at some of the neighborhood schools. We are very concerned that relocating our school would have a disproportionate effect on our current historically underserved and ELL families, as we believe many live close to the school. And the responsibility of transportation is entirely on each student's family with no bus service. As Deidra mentioned, this is the first time we have ever spoken as a community at a board meeting or any of the DIBRAC meetings. We wanted to hear what our neighborhood schools wanted to say and give them time and space to say it. It has been very important for us to work together with our neighborhood schools to find a solution that works for everyone. We invite you to come visit our school and see how we teach and how our kids learn. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Carr. I have a first grader at Hayhurst Elementary. Thank you so much for opening the public comment to allow us to speak today. We just have three quick messages. One, we really need relief for fall of 2016. We are at our maximum right now. Next year, without any relief, we will have two or three classrooms in our cafeteria. Second is that unfortunately, if that is fixed immediately, our neighborhood growth will not be sufficient. We will have growth. It will get there, but not by fall of 2016. So we do need to have some help. We have started reaching out to our neighborhood, to Maplewood, to Riki, to talk with them about some guaranteed transfers focused at the different grade levels. Hard boundaries would be a great change, except for we get a whole bunch of kindergartners. We don't need a whole bunch of kindergartners. We need people at each grade. So we're trying to work with our neighbors to find some community members who might be willing to voluntarily transfer. And since we've been sitting here for a little bit, and because everyone probably needs to stretch their brains and use their right side instead of their left side, or whatever we need to do, I'd like to recap with a song.
Bring it.
Hello, it's me. I've been wondering if after all these weeks we'd get to speak, to go over the boundaries. They say PPX will fix us, but we've not seen a fix yet. Hello, can you hear me? I'm on Iowa Street dreaming bout where Odyssey should be next year, when we're really squishy. They say time will fix us, but we've not seen a fix yet. There's such a difference between us, but it's not walkability. Hello from the Hayhurst side. We must have tried a dozen times to tell you we're happy with everything that you've done, but please don't forget we still need a few more friends in the fall. Hello.
She now wishes she went first.
You don't want to follow that, do you?
I'm not singing. Just so you know. And you're welcome.
That was awesome.
Seriously? I should have warned you. But they're all listening now. So there you go. Okay, thank you for warming that up for me. Hi, my name is Allison Gash, and I'm here on behalf of Maplewood families and my two Maplewood children. Our community is a newcomer to the discussions on boundary change, having only recently been referenced for more significant boundary changes. As such, we really appreciate the school board for allowing us this late entry to participate in tonight's meeting. We also want to sincerely thank the many families and communities across the West Side who helped get us up to speed on the various proposals. This is truly a community effort. And I know I join the vast majority of Portland families in expressing overwhelming gratitude to Superintendent Smith for publicly and swiftly declaring her commitment to maintain both the grandfathering and sibling policies that traditionally govern school boundary modifications. This assurance has permitted us to engage in effective conversations about boundary changes with open minds and cooler heads. Despite our late arrival to these discussions, Maplewood families have rallied together to identify several items they wish to impart to Superintendent Smith and the school board as they deliberate. First, just for absolute peace of mind, we're asking that the grandfathering policy extend through middle school for Maplewood students. Currently proposed boundary changes result on a small number of our families being rezoned to Hayhurst, which feeds to Gray, and all Maplewood students being rezoned to Jackson. Current grandfathering would allow students to continue with their peer group at Maplewood. We ask that this be extended through Jackson. Middle school years are painful enough without the added stress of having to leave your peer network at such an awkward time. Second, while current reports show Maplewood at 99.5% utilization, we are actually already overcrowded. Many cite 2020 as the year that Maplewood will be critically over-enrolled. Recent data suggests, however, that the year is actually 2018. Add to this, we expect at least two multifamily developments with 130-plus units and a multitude of single-family infill housing in our catchment. The prognosis is clear. Maplewood needs change. We want change. We hope, however, that any boundary or policy reforms reflect the insights and expertise of Maplewood families, and that we have an opportunity to respond to any additional scenarios that may involve Maplewood, that may involve our school. We're not resistant to change. Rather, we believe we can be effective partners in crafting thoughtful enrollment solutions that make sense for our families and the West Side. Maplewood families can help you strategize boundary changes that consider the peculiar geography of our catchment area, with congested streets lacking safe crosswalks, sidewalks, or shoulders, and roads that inexplicably end in green space or backyards, quirks that cannot be gleaned from a map. We ask that you avoid making hasty boundary decisions at this late point in the process, leaving us with little time for analysis and input before a board vote in March. While deliberation does take time, we also need immediate relief. Therefore, we suggest the following solution.
Oh, we want to hear the solution.
Thank you so much. Okay. We suggest the following solution, which is, as Hayhurst also suggested, a voluntary guaranteed transfer policy for Maplewood students to Hayhurst. This interim measure will alleviate immediate Maplewood and Hayhurst enrollment pressures while allowing us to develop longer-term solutions as the growth patterns in our catchment areas unfold. Maplewood is eager to partner with the West Side and the district to address enrollment issues. Although we are but one school among many, we join our fellow communities and our leaders as one voice in seeking changes that provide our children with a safe, supportive, productive, and stable educational environment. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. All right. We now move to our quarterly report from our Bond Accountability Committee. I would like to invite Kevin Spellman or, okay, great. Mr. Fontenot and Tom. Tom Peterson, excuse me. Do you intend to sing your quarterly report?
Tom might. I don't think that would be a pretty picture. That's a pretty tough act to follow. So ours won't be quite so good, I guess. So we're here tonight to kind of talk about our quarterly meeting. I believe you have in your packet our report. I'm going to touch on some of the highlights from the report. And then Louis is also here to join me to talk a little bit about another proposal that's being considered by the board. It's related to the bond program. So I'm going to kind of set the context for Louis's comments. So I don't know if you had a chance to get out to the construction sites. I have, and it's been very active, so there's a lot of activity going on. We're spending about $9 million a month, which is serious money. So there's a couple of things that we wanted to point out in our report. One is, just to clarify what the role of the Bond Accountability Committee is, as defined in our charter. And so primarily, we're appointed to monitor the performance of the bond program and to provide advice to the board on related issues. And occasionally, staff will seek our advice from time to time, given our respective backgrounds. But that's not really our primary role, and that we are not really, we have no policymaking role, nor any kind of an executive function. And we just want to make sure, clear that we see it that way, and hopefully you do as well. There's a couple of, one area of our roles which focuses a lot on the financial side, and I want to talk a little bit about that specifically as it relates to contingency and reserves. As you're probably aware, we're in a fairly challenging bid market right now. Not only is it affecting bidding for the school district, but it's affecting bidding on my project to Port as well. And so as a result, these higher bids are creating challenges for the bond program as it relates to the contingency. So for example, Fabian, bids came in higher, so the program had to draw down $1.9 million to cover the bids that exceeded that budget. Franklin, we're down to about $4.3 million, and we still have about $70 million to go of expenditures. We haven't really, we really haven't spent that much yet, and we still have a lot to go with a relatively small contingency at this. about Roosevelt is they haven't got into the old school yet. And as you were experiencing in Franklin, they found a lot of surprises, so to speak, when they started lifting the floor. And so they're experiencing some challenges with their budget, dealing with some of these unexpected hazardous materials that they have to deal with. And I would expect that you would see, you would see that at Roosevelt as well. So we would be really, we want to be really cautious at this point about these are dipping into any contingencies at Roosevelt at this point. And then last, the 2016 IP program currently has no contingency in that program at this point. Hoping the bids will come in, but if we, if the bids come in under, then obviously we'll have a little bit of contingency for that program. But if they don't, we're going to have to draw, the district's going to have to draw down from the program reserves, so there's some contingency for that, this upcoming program. So the program contingency reserves is about 21 million right now. So if we want to put this in context, we're only three years into an eight-year program. Thirty percent of the bond proceeds have been spent. We still have 70 percent to go, so there's still a lot of risk out there. All of the $45 million escalation contingency has been allocated or spent from the original budget. The, of the $47 million bond premium, 45 million of that has been spent or allocated. We still have a $110 million grant program, which is only in preliminary design. And there's another 25 million of promised IP work that we haven't bid for the coming years. So the, the concern, obviously, is we need to manage these contingencies very closely, and we'll talk a little bit more about, and a specific item that's being considered to draw down that contingency in a minute. I also want to talk about a couple other things. I want to comment on the equity program. We, this district is doing a good job to try to involve the students in the, in the program. And there's this really unique opportunity to take advantage of all this activity. In fact, we received public testimony at our last meeting about a more aggressive approach to taking advantage of this opportunity. However, we don't really see that as the, as the office of school modernizations necessarily responsibility, to be better handled by the teaching and learning office to create, supporting curriculum, to then take advantage of this program. Our apprenticeship program is going very well. We're exceeding the 20 percent goal. Our MWESB program has been a challenge. There, the district is doing very well on the consultant side of the house. We have a little bit more flexibility in trying to achieve those small business goals. In fact, the Madison master plan, I had a 40, ended up with a 44 percent participation, which is very, very good. On the construction side, however, that continues to be a challenge. Right now, I think overall, we're less than 5 percent on a 20 percent call. Now, as we expected, I just, just got, subsequent to the meeting, I just learned that on Roosevelt, I believe, yeah, Roosevelt, the continuance, the MWESB program is targeted for around 19 percent, which is pretty good. However, your bid work, not so good. And I would, I would say that the challenge the district's going to have is because we, you don't have a disparity study to, as a basis for your, setting your goals, it's much more difficult for contractors, and much more difficult for the district, to enforce any kind of goals until you do that. Now, I think I've said this at previous meetings, until you have some history, you can't do the disparity study. So it's going to be a continual challenge. I am encouraged by results at Roosevelt. I expect we will see similar, better results at Franklin. The negotiated work, by its very nature, lends better opportunities for small business participation than the hard bid work. So for example, Fabian did okay, but it was only 10 percent, and it was a hard bid job. So that's, that's the challenge ahead of us. And I also want to comment on the safety performance. It's been very good, no incidents. That's always good and important, particularly at Roosevelt, when you think about the fact that they're performing this work around an active school. And then we also wanted to acknowledge Jerry, and he's made a very, been very effective transitioning into his new role. So those are kind of my comments. Happy to answer any questions when we're done.
So have you, as you've heard from Tom, the Portland is in a very hot construction market, which is great for Portland as a whole. People are employed, buildings are being built. But it makes building projects very difficult, especially when you're looking out into the future for several years. And so in such a market, safeguarding contingency budgets is paramount. And so thus, we were, the bond accountability committee, we were surprised, subsequent to our January meeting, to see a request for the use of some of this contingency that we so dearly have been watching. That request came from the board, School Bond, School Improvement Bond Committee, and the request was to fund the design of a new 10,000-square-foot Makerspace building on the Roosevelt campus in a location reserved for future classrooms. Note that the Roosevelt High School has been designed to meet ed specs, and it was funded accordingly. And there are no funds available right now in the project contingency for design, and certainly none for the construction of a 10,000-square-foot structure. The BAC believes that this project is not within the spirit of the 2012 bond vote, especially when 70 percent of the money has not yet been spent for items that are required for the bond. And so the bond accountability committee opposes the use of bond funds at this time for this add-on project. Now, none of this means that the project is a bad idea. It's just that it should not be used with these funds right now. There are other possible options, general fund, using the general fund, borrowing the money, securing private partner, private partnerships, or included in the 1016 bond vote. But for now, we cannot support the project, and we're open for any questions.
Thank you.
So I have a question. So Louis, when you say the BAC opposes the use of that contingency money for the Makerspace, what exactly does it mean?
When we heard that this was presented or brought forward to the Board of School Improvement Bond Committee, Kevin Spellman sent out an email to all the members of the, of the bond accountability committee and said, hey, this is what's currently going on, please, you know, weigh in. And everyone, it's 100 percent, said, we can't find a way to do this within our constraints of how the bond funds should be used. And so when we are opposing it, it's not that we're opposing Makerspace. We think Makerspace is great. We need more Makerspace. But for this bond, for these ed specs, it cannot be done and still do it, be prudent about the use of the funds, because at any time, something could happen with one of the existing buildings. We could find a wonderful gift, you know, and, or, well, I mean, I was being facetious. We could find a problem in one of the buildings, and it could easily eat up the contingency. Or in this hot construction market, you know, prices escalate, and they could out-escalate what our current budgets are. And so we need to be prudent about, prudent about using the money right now.
And I would just like to clarify what the discussion and the recommendation coming out of our bond committee was. It was only regarding the development of design documents for this space and not, not anticipating in advance how the project would be funded. So it was to entertain the notion of approving to proceed with those documents, and then bringing that recommendation from that committee to the full board, who would then vote on whether to proceed with the design documents. So it's, and that has not come before the board yet. So I just wanted to clarify, it was not about funding of the entire program itself, and there was, wasn't even discussion around specifically looking at the Roosevelt contingency, which we know, everyone agrees and understands that that cannot be touched, you know, unless we find ourselves in the fortunate position at the end of construction that it's still there, but...
So I'm confused about that, because I think what the BAC, gee, can I speak? Because I think what the BAC is saying, so I just want to clarify this, that you oppose, what you're opposing is the use of contingency to fund the building of the Makerspace.
I would say we're opposed to allocating any of those funds at this time. And, you know, certainly at the end of construction, if there's money available, and you've completed all the other aspects of the bond program that the voters passed, and if there's money available, obviously you have that authority to do so.
Well, when you say authority, I'm not clear what you mean. Authority to do so.
Well, you as the board have the authority to choose how you want to spend the money. We don't. We just make recommendations.
Right.
And what I'm saying is that we, we're, we're looking at it from a financial and our experience in the construction industry. And since this was not, not part of the original program, in our minds, it's an add-on to the original bond program. And as such, until there's money left over from the original bond program, you shouldn't be committing dollars to this add-on project until you know you have the funding to do that. And right now, we would caution you against doing that, because it's way too early in the project to know whether you're going to have money left over to fund this. I think that's really what we're saying.
So I'm still wanted to clarify, contingency can be used for change in scope in the project.
It has been used for change in scope in the project. And now we're at the point that you cannot prudently use any more contingency to change the scopes, because there's a high likelihood that when these buildings are completed, there will be no contingency left. We're in a very hot construction market, and the contingency's going to be spent. And so it's best to wait until everything's been built out. We can look up and go, okay, it's done. We reconcile the books. If there's additional money left over, spend it. But right now, it would not be a prudent course of action.
I think, I think the risk you would have is that if you were to, if you were to allocate those dollars now, you could get, get to the end of the project, and all of a sudden you're going to have to ask for money out of your general fund or some other way to make up the deficit. That's all we're saying. And so, that make sense?
I appreciate you bringing your viewpoint forward.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, and for all your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move right into our quarterly capital bond update from our staff. I'd like to invite Jerry Vincent, the Director of the Office of School Modernization, and Dan Young.
Good evening. Some of this you've been through either in your packet or just covered by the BAC, but there are some things we'd like to go through regarding the, our PowerPoint presentation. We're here tonight to talk about the program, and are we starting with the video, or the PowerPoint?
PowerPoint.
Okay. So what we want to talk about tonight is the overall with the program, and each quarter report, we make the statement until we cannot make the statement that it is on time and it's on budget, and that we're trans, very transparent. You just heard, we still, within the contingencies, are finishing bidding and doing work with the projects, and, but we are nervous about the contingency amount, but we can make the statement that we are still within the budgets of each project or the overall program budget and contingency to date. And so we begin each quarterly meeting by making that statement. We are on time as well. We made up some time on a few projects where some of the design fell behind, but we are either into the construction or the next phase of the design where the master plan fell behind. There's a balanced scorecard in your packet. We're going to go over a page of it when, when the PowerPoint comes up. There's something you want to call out there. And I'll just go over, until this comes up, a couple of things. We're going to cover the modernizations, and I just want to talk about Franklin. We're at 22 percent complete to date. It probably seems like we should be a lot more, because we've been out there a long time. There's been a lot of asbestos abatement and demolition. We are doing construction in four different sectors at this time. Roosevelt has jumped up to 23 percent complete. They were about at maybe 17 percent last month. They had a huge push this past month. In fact, in the, in the month alone, we've processed about $6 million worth of work out there. The big focus and push at Roosevelt right now, of course, is the Phase 1, and the first two buildings coming online in August, so that's exciting, and a lot of progress is occurring in that area. Fabian is no longer there. It has completely been abated and torn down. The internal road is starting to go in. And great news, you've been following our permit process at all. Franklin went fairly well. Roosevelt was late, considerably late before we got our permits. And we received an email yesterday from the city, number one, saying all of your Fabian permits have been approved, and way ahead of schedule. And then there was an added comment that, yes, that is a clap. And there was an added comment I saw on there that our project team that they're working with is, was extremely pleasant, and overall was one of the best projects or processes they've been through in a while, and they say they can't say that very often. So it was very good to hear that news yesterday. And here we are up here right now. So we'll go over the modernization and the, and Fabian. Summer projects is next. We are on schedule to have 13 projects put out to bid here in about the next month and a half to two months. Represents about $13.614 million worth of work that we're going to do this summer, same as past years, leaky roofs, elevators, ADA compliance, all those are the mainstay of those things, along with the seismic retrofitting of the roof when we perform that. And then, of course, the master plans. Benson and Lincoln are under, have been underway, and Madison started off a week or so ago with their first meeting, so all three are underway. Grant still meets, because we still have the site work, and we still update on how the design is going. We are in schematic drawings and getting ready to go into design drawings for Grant. So that's just an overview, and we'll start to go into the next slide here. Balanced scorecard, the elongated version is in your report. We just, this is an important one right here, so we want to call it out. The colors are not stating it very well. First three are green. The fourth one is yellow. That will, even though we are making great strides in improving the overall equity in the MWESB percentage, that stays yellow until we hit the aspirational goal of 18 percent or greater. So you're, you're going to see that until we can get there. So we call that out. We're very transparent about it, and we put it out there to be seen. We feel very good about outreach. We had our first ever small business open house on the February 3rd. It was probably about 400 people were there. Our FAM and OSM departments were well attended. We had crews that rotated in and out in shifts throughout the whole day for that thing, and then I stayed there the whole day, met a lot of people, gathered business cards, handed out business cards, and it was, it was a great event. And so we can only get better at it. Eloisa Miller was, was wonderful in setting it up. We're going to continue to grow that. So we got the first one out there. We also went through, oh, tomorrow, if you can make it at all, is our youth expo. It's going to be my first one since coming here, and it's all day. Breakfast is about 7:00, 7:30, if you want to join me. And so we'll be out there all day with our teams. Everyone of our contractors and architects is either going to be working the floor and/or has a booth or both. We have 100 percent participation from the whole group this year. And then getting more in tune with the community, myself, I'm, I'm attending Namex meeting on March 2nd in the evening, and we also had another 30 annual subcontractor trade show on the 18th that was attended by staff. So we're trying to get out there with that outreach and make an impact, and... on March 2nd in the evening and we also had another 30 annual subcontractor trade show on the 18th that was attended by staff. So we're trying to get out there with that outreach and make an impact and, and our student engagement, do you have the latest, we have the latest figures, we were up about another 300 or 400 kids since last time reported out that we've had involved in activities and tours. And so we feel good about this overall, we, we're not there and on the, on the equity MW ESB and we're gonna state that until we are there. So we want to talk about that. If you roll into the slides, just a little bit of what's going on out there if you haven't been and then if you're interested in another tour, please let us know. If you're looking at the auditorium up there and what looks at from before at Franklin and after, stripping a lot of the classrooms down, the far lower right looks like everybody's out there in the evening, but that is a 7:00 AM concrete pour that's going on out there. So, and at one point, we had, I think, three cranes on the site at the same time, so there's a lot of activity going on, on the site. There's some progress in the new gym. Let's take a look at the next slide. And here's over at Roosevelt, we have our lower ramp informing going in, walls, floors being poured, walls going up, you can see structural steel on the deck there on the south classrooms. And we are on track still to have our two first new buildings open up in August. We roll over to Grant, there's a picture and we're gonna end with a video from the Grant open house and community meetings and DAGs, but what you also see on there is absolutely nothing on there, but it's really good if you saw. Yeah, so anyway, there was a layout, there's a 3D rendering model of the building and you saw the new classroom additions on it. There it is, over on the upper left. So the large two blue squares over there is the, the new gymnasium and auxiliary gym and the other narrow rectangle areas are the adds to widening for collaboration space and classrooms. And then the lower level one out by the field, just to, would be the right of the gym there is the new classroom wing addition, closing that off, creating a quad area, that's part of the approved master plan that's being designed right now. Our Grant CM GCRF will be out in the street within weeks, it's being finally vetted, has a lot of the new MW ESB and language and things of that nature in it, it's working its way around through legal right now. The, the auditor wanted to take a look at, a number of people were opening up, were getting eyes on it and it's going through the process, it's gonna hit the street. And I think with that, we will end with the, with the video and then, oh, I'm sorry, here we are, here's Fabian, it's coming down. It's all the way down now, we actually have one of the interior roads going into the campus, we have monthly check-in meetings with Concordia, our partner on this. And like I said, with those permits arriving yesterday, we, we just feel great about having that out of the way and not being in that nervous area where we're starting to do activities and don't have our permits. And next, so where we're going, next three months, we're gonna continue with Franklin and Roosevelt and we are trying to achieve, well, we should be by summer in the 40%, 35, 30% range on both projects. What you heard the BAC mention is true, we're, we were getting into the Roosevelt existing buildings in September, October. Anything we are learning from Franklin, we're rolling over and having cross interdepartmental meetings with our team so that Franklin is able to tell Grant for the upcoming proposal and contract and then tell Roosevelt, be careful, you're not wanting to do more destructive testing this summer than what you're planning on doing to see if you hit what we hit. So we're trying to share that wealth and the information, you know, if bad news has to pop up, we're trying to mitigate it to a level of insignificance and get it to other folks and, and get it addressed. So, and Grant continues with design, it, it's a schematic and design development will go into the fall, all the way into the fall in those updates. Fabian's all the way down from the time we had to turn this in to the board and master plans are underway. We call them the DAGs for the first round because it was part of the design, as you may know, this time around, we're, we're doing the master plan work only with this bond for Benson, Madison and Lincoln, we're not doing the design yet. So they're called MPCs, you'll see that language change, it's the Master Plan Committee instead of the DAG, the D A G. And so they've been meeting, I've, I've attended just about all of them, you get a pulse for what's going on and, and things are going all right there. And IP, IP projects, we've got some good news, you heard the BAC, and this, this is breaking news, so we got the email during the board meeting tonight from our lead architect on the summer projects, that, the advanced cost estimate plan review is actually coming in less than what the preliminary one was, so we're already starting to backfill some of the low contingency amounts that they're concerned about. We're just kinda happy, you know? We're not ecstatic about it, but we're happy. And so it was good news to hear from her on that, just got the email. And like I said, we're gonna do 13 projects for about 13.6 million this summer, that takes our commitment out to just about 60 of what we said we would do, up to 63 in the bond. And technically, some of the sites we've touched twice, so if you were to add them back in for their second scope of work, we're over 63, might be closer to 65, 66. So we, we've met that goal from what we said we were going to do and, and what we did, we're, we're there. And then next is our video and our slide and Terry, I know you're back there somewhere if you want to cue that up.
We had all sorts of different community groups come in today, we had future parents, we had alumni, we had current parents, we had students, it ended up being an extremely productive workshop for us to have because we got opinions that were saying, yes, we need to keep athletics, and then we had people that were saying that we need to do performing arts. And so it was just a really good balance to understand where the community is because as DAG members, we're supposed to represent the community. Today, we were actually able to see what specific details they wanted.
I just want, was mostly curious, didn't have any strong views one way or the other about the design for the future of Grant, but got quite excited as a result of the process today. So I came up with a lot of ideas for the future of Grant that I was surprised that I came up with. I think it was exciting to see a roomful of people of many different kinds, current parents, neighbors, a lot of energy, different points of view and people freely exchanging their views and really very open discussion that generated and changed people's thinking about some of the key issues that were here today.
It allows people to tell, you know, explain what's important to them and hopefully we can go back to our neighborhoods and talk to our neighborhoods and sort of explain what we learned and, you know, maybe encourage them to get involved in future meetings.
We're asking questions that some of the other people involved in the design may not have even considered yet, just both the peculiarities of how we use the Grant High School, but also kind of like, okay, these peculiarities give in the way of student success, what are we doing?
It's pretty interesting to be on the DAG because you're, you're kinda shaping the building that future kids will use and you're kinda shaping the future for this school.
It's gonna be a complicated process in that everybody's ideas are gonna be, be seen in the final product, but I, I think that the more people that can be involved, the better for Grant, the better for Portland.
This only happens probably, you know, once in your lifetime that you get to actually put your input into the discussion of the new school. For the students that are going to be here, you know, learning in the new school, they need to know what is going to happen to their school and they need to be involved.
March 5th, if you can come out and join us. It's March 5th, if you can come out and join us. And, and I will say that one of the things that we are doing regarding master plans is, is, is lessons learned from our Franklin and Roosevelt is through the Marshall Lot Assessment, a lot of that was rolled out during Grant. We now have meetings every two weeks with the architect for the master plan for Benson, for Lincoln, for Madison. Grant has been in there to do a transition on what we've learned or what we've done and we meet with those architects all together in the same room so that we are understanding and putting something together forward, how the individual MPCs take those issues as relate to their schools are different, but on our end, we're trying to get some consistency in how we're doing what we're doing, we're trying to learn from the processes from the past. So any questions that you have of us this evening?
How many gymnasium floors are we building?
The Edspec calls for one full gym and auxiliary gym.
One at Grant, what, at Roosevelt, are we putting in a new floor?
Yes, I believe so.
Franklin?
I believe so.
New floor, are we building them the way you're supposed to build the gym floor or are we putting them on concrete?
Oh gosh, I sure hope they're on sleepers. I've landed on concrete gym floors before. No, they should be, they should be hard when on sleepers.
Should be.
I, I can't speak to that exactly right now, but...
Could somebody send me a thing?
All right.
Just email.
Did you think otherwise or?
No, I, I just...
Just wanna make sure?
Just curious.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
Did we, have, did, you and I had talked about the Grant High School staff being involved in certain ways, did we, are we doing any better there or?
When you called me, it was regarding Benson, not Grant.
Well, Grant too.
Grant's been very involved.
Okay. I, I know Grant's involved, your question was about Benson and I spoke, yeah.
Benson was one, but Grant also originally.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And so I, I know Grant's very involved, Benson, we had a meeting with the principal last week and talked about that. And I think what we need to do is have the architect roll out the schedule on when we're coming to the rest of the teachers in their own discipline and to talk to them. I think maybe some of them didn't know if we were coming at all and if they're not on the MPC, they probably weren't sure if we were coming. So we probably could have done a better job on rolling that out and when we're coming to see them.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll let them know.
Great, thank you.
And we'll confirm, but I can't imagine we're doing anything that's a concrete floor without putting what's called a riser, a sleeper in it and putting...
Well, really, gym floor is built with, not with the little risers only, I mean, a good gym floor is built in a certain way.
Yeah.
I know, my guess is, since that's more expensive, that we're not building it in the best way.
I, I wouldn't...
We may want to check, I don't know, I'm curious, thank you.
Be glad to do it, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
So Steve, I was just gonna, I'm on the Grant DAG, so I thought you might like to know some of the things that we're doing with those teachers there. So they've had, I think, four or five just staff meetings on this. And then a couple of months ago, we had a busload of us, about half teachers, I don't, were you there Katie? Half teachers, half DAG members and we went up to Seattle and looked at four different schools, then we came back down here and looked at a school. And then we also, a group of us from the DAG went to get, out to breakfast with all the art teachers because they were very concerned about what might happen at the, with the art situation there. And then the teachers have been very active in coming to the DAG meetings and then for our public outreach, we've had lots of teachers there and they've been very helpful with helping the public understand what we might be looking at, especially when we were looking at things like the gymnasiums and classroom spaces and, which I'm, I think, when, when all that comes to the board, it'll be very exciting because there are some really great new ideas around classroom space that the teachers have been involved in putting that together. So lots of, lots of inputs, been really, it's been very, very fun having the teachers involved to know what's happening there.
You know, regarding the tours, just today, Derek from our office coordinating with our project directors, possible tours of things to see, again, the same group, instead of running out, kind of Starburst theory, everybody running to each other one, so just our project directors met and going over from Madison and Benson and Lincoln, what might be some of the sites, some of the districts, projects we want to go see, what did we like this, not dislike from what we saw under Grant and, and Franklin and Roosevelt, so we don't repeat that. So again, trying to bring that effort together, we'll take that in with the architects in our next meeting with all the architects and through that back out to the MPCs on possible list and even get some of them on the same bus, on the same team, instead of different times, going out. So we're just trying to make that whole effort, we're trying to take all that thing that looked and felt individualized before, we're trying to learn from it and pull it all together.
I thought the, just, I thought the bus tours to Seattle, I had gone on one before we even went out for the first bond years ago, but then going up with this one where you were with the DAG, with the teachers, with the architects, it really built a lot of camaraderie in the group, which I thought was very helpful with how we were able to move the Grant design forward, which I think is really phenomenal, I'm very excited about it and I think the group is too. But I, I thought that was really good, I know you said mixing them up a little bit, but it really is great to build that camaraderie with the group when they're on the bus, I mean, you can't get away from everybody, right?
Right.
Although the architects kept us working all the time, so it was, it was good.
Good. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I would like to welcome Laura Conroy, the MESD Public Information Officer, and Dan Hicks, MESD Grants and Risk Manager, to the speaker's table to provide your report from the Metropolitan Education Service District Local Service Plan. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Chair Konstam, not Curly tonight and I, it looks like the superintendent has stepped out a minute. My name is Laura Conroy and as you introduced me correctly, I am the Public Information Officer for the Multnomah Education Services District and with me tonight is Don Hicks, our Contracts and Risk Manager. And on behalf of Interim Superintendent Scott Perry and our board leadership, we are here tonight to ask for your approval of the local service plan. Just a quick update, our board leadership and our interim superintendent, along with our superintendent search committee, is meeting tonight and for that reason, they cannot be here to select the semifinalists for our next superintendent. We received 17 applicants and tonight they're reviewing those applications and tomorrow afternoon, we'll be announcing publicly the names of our semifinalists. And we hope to have our new superintendent in place prior to the end of March. I hope my face is familiar to you, we met in December when I was here with Vice Chair Badwan presenting our accountability report. That report shared with you how PPS had participated in the services that MESD had to offer. And tonight, we're at the opposite end of that process where we are talking about the local service plan, which I hope you have in your packets, looks like this, okay, great. The local service plan is a high-level document that describes the regional core services that will be available to the component school districts in the Multnomah Education Service District. As you may correctly guess, the component school districts are the districts in Multnomah County, so that's Corbett, Riverdale, Gresham Barlow, Park Rose, Reynolds, Centennial, and of cour, David Douglas, thank you, and of course, PPS, I was hoping not to have to look at my list. Each year, the representatives from these school districts, including PPS, work side by side with MESD staff to plan the types of services that are going to be available to these groups, to this group of school districts. To be clear, not every school district accesses the menu of services available on the local service plan. Again, it's merely the high-level document that describes the list of services that a district could access to serve students. Under Oregon law, the local service plan must be approved by the school district boards and so we are before you tonight to seek that approval and I can take any questions you have.
Do we have any questions or discussion regarding their service plan?
We have a question from the superintendent that pertains to this.
Yes.
How do we go about making the decision within the district for, I assume that the superintendent is supporting this plan?
Yes, and actually, it's a, this is a conversation amongst the superintendents, like that, in terms of what's the menu that we have to choose from?
No, yeah, well, how do we go about making that decision in-house if this is the plan we're supporting? What's the process we do in-house?
Because we, so we're working from what did we do last year, but I'm gonna let David walk you through because he goes through and meets with the various budget holders.
I mean, does he make the, who?
No, we're looking at it as a, as a whole, it's, it's a long process.
I'll let you make a presentation, then I'll ask.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and let David tell you, talk to you.
So we, we essentially use four, the, the things we do with the EST essentially fall into four buckets, if you would. The school health services is a significant, is the largest piece of those. There are some alternative education services like the ones that you saw on the Business Agenda last week. There is outdoor school and then there are a number of things, some of the funding for synergy is funded through the EST and our online library system and things like that. So there's really four major things that we use this year, we use MESD dollars for. So we meet with, each year as we're developing the budget for the superintendent to propose to the board, we meet with folks and check on what are, what we want to do for the following year and that list of services is part of the proposed budget that the superintendent presents to you. And that list of services is part of the proposed budget that the superintendent presents to you.
And, and we also, across the six districts, we generally have a meeting that's with the finance officers and the superintendents, where we're looking at everybody's usage of services, so that we have some read as a system of, okay, we've got heavy usage of this. Oh, this is the only district left doing this. Does that really make sense anymore? Oh, PPS is doing this in order to subsidize everybody else. Does that make sense? I mean, we have tons of like, system issues that we look to try and make visible across the system. Some of the instructional things that the smaller districts do that we may not do. But David and I are part of that with ESD staff and the superintendents and business managers from the other districts as well.
Now, do we include people like our head of our special ed?
Yeah, so Mary actually comes to that meeting with us, because a bunch of the services are hers.
What other of our major administrators do we include in the decision-making process? We do Mary Anderson.
So, Mary Pearson from Special Education. Tammy Jackson is the Director of Student Services, who oversees the School Health Services part of it. Josh Klein is.
IT, Karina Wolf.
And Karina Wolf.
From Alternative Ed, because there are Alternative Ed slots that we use. And again, some of the, there are services that are more effective for us to, if we have an irregular pattern of numbers of kids that may use the service, it's more cost-effective for us to have ESD keep the critical mass of the service available, and we purchase slots rather than try and build a capacity here, when we may have a small number of kids, and then inflating, deflating number of kids actually utilizing the service. So, then it becomes very cost-effective for us to have six, you know, multiple districts sharing the service.
And the other, the other thing I would, just real fast, is there are, as, as you heard, there's a menu of services here, a number of which we do not subscribe to, because it doesn't make sense for us. And there's also some things, for example, on Synergy, which is purchased through a multi-ESD cooperative. MESD offers two levels of service, one of which involves more support, and we don't, we, we, we take the lower tier, because we've got the capacity internally to provide that level of support ourselves. So, so sometimes we'll negotiate a, a multi-tier pricing system, because it makes more sense for us to participate in a different way than perhaps it does for the other smaller districts, who don't have the capacity internally to support some of these things. So we, part of the conversations you heard the superintendent talk about, when we are talking collectively with the other districts and with the MESD, that's one of the things that we're looking at as well, about whether or not it makes sense to have a differentiated level of service.
Thank you, thank you.
And I had a question, which you may have answered, or at least partially, but when we are budgeting for what we want to opt into among that menu of services, are most of those services then, do we budget on a per-student basis in terms of, of designating how many students we think we will have using such a service? Or do some of the things on the menu of services are, you're either in or you're out, and you pay a certain amount?
Yes.
To both?
So some of the things, Outdoor School is a per-student thing. The Synergy is, you're in or you're out, but it is also, that is also actually on a per-student basis. The School Health Services are not on a per-student basis, they're on a per, per nurse or per, per health assistant basis. And the Alternative Education and Special Education things are, we commit to a certain number of slots, minimum number of placements. So we, we estimate that we may have, you know, eleven students placed in a particular program. And we have the flex, we can go up and down from that, if we have funding available within the allocation. But we give an indication so that the MESD can staff things. So it's really, there's sort of three different ways. There's per-student in some cases, there is in or out in some things. And then, in other things like the Health Services, we're contracting for certain staff from them to be working in our schools or with our students.
Thank you.
I just have a question about the School Psych Services, for example, because I know that we have one bilingual psych in the district, and with the multiple languages that we have. Can we contract with you for, like, special ed assessments in different languages?
I'm looking at Superintendent Smith, and I'm looking back at you. Although, I'm gonna say a number of times, the ESD uses our translation services frequently when we're, anyways, I don't know the real answer to that.
We don't currently contract with the ESD for psychologists, no.
No, we don't currently, but can we? I don't know.
Yeah, I guess my question is, what's available for other languages?
Sure. And I, I recall.
Again, we have one bilingual psych in Spanish bilingual.
And I recall that at the Accountability Report, you asked the question whether the ESD provided ELL services. And I have an answer for you, which is that within our programs, yes. So if you have students that are enrolled in our programs, then yes, we have ELL services. If the question is more expansive, perhaps you and I can talk after the meeting.
No, actually, that's fine.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that we followed up with you.
Thank you.
Great.
I think the answer to whether the district could contract with the ESD is, the ESD is of course always here to serve you, and we were always interested in having conversations, including the possibility of contracts, that could support you and the services students.
But my, I guess my question is, do you have personnel available for, in other languages, for like, School Psych Services?
I'd have to ask, I'd have to ask our direction of, our Director of Instruction Services, Catherine Skemas, but I can certainly do that. And I will follow up with you.
Thank you.
And you're right, that if in fact, there was a conversation amongst the superintendents, that we all need X service that we aren't currently doing, that would, we can create new categories of service that we then decide we want to do together, because it would serve a need. So I mean, that's part of what the ESD is about, is figuring out how it's of service to the member districts, so.
Yeah, and I think as we continue to diversify in our languages, and we have concerns about students needing evaluations for special education, that we certainly have to consider their need for native language assessments, along with English assessments, and the personnel, and it might be a good service for something like an ESD.
It is an example of the kind of service where it might be, it would probably be hard for any one district, except for Portland perhaps, to justify, to be able to justify having that person on their own staff.
Yeah.
But for the other seven districts, who might need access to that some of the time, it is, it is an example. I mean, that is, those are the kind of conversations that we want to have with the ESD. And I will say, certainly with the interim superintendent and, and the staff who we've been working with more recently, there's, there's been a, a new flavor of collaboration and possibility, which is encouraging.
That's great. Alright, the Board will now consider Resolution Number 5213, Annual Multnomah Education Service District Resolution Process. Do I have a motion? I move.
Second.
Director Sparrow Brown moves, and Director Anthony seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5213. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on this resolution? Is there any board discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, the Board will now vote on Resolution 5213. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5213 is appro, is approved by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Davidson voting yes. Great. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we come now to our grades six through twelve, Language Arts Adoption. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would, and I'm gonna ask Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning Chris Russo to come on up and introduce the six, twelve Language Adoption, and introduce the rest of the team, who will be doing the presentation tonight.
Good evening, members of the Board. Superintendent Smith, it's with great pleasure, and on behalf of all of OTL, the Office of Teaching and Learning, and especially these folks back here, we are here to present the six, twelve Language Arts Adoption. And please note, what we are about to present, or the group behind me specifically, is a collaboration of two years of hard work, and that spanned all levels of the organization. So Andrea, or, could you come on up, please? I'd like to introduce Andrea Lockard, who has been at the forefront of, of this, this recommendation, this adoption. And I'll go ahead and let her introduce her team.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you about this tonight. I'd like to introduce my, the rest of my assistant directors in partnership. So we have Michael Bacon from the Department of Dual Language, and Tanya Melde from the Department of English as a Second Language. And before we start our presentation, we actually want to invite some teachers, or two teachers specifically, to offer some testimony about their experience with the process and the curriculum we're about to put forward. So I'd like to call Larissa Beck first.
Hi, good evening. I'm so not used to sitting down and addressing anyone, so it's like, ugh, I should stand up. So what I want to talk with you about tonight is the Inquiry by Design curriculum that I piloted with my sixth, with my seventh and eighth grade students at Beach K eight in North Portland. So as you know, Beach K eight is a dual-language immersion school. I teach on what is referred to as the Community or the English side, but I also teach one group of eighth-grade dual-language immersion students. So I want to come to you as someone who is working with both of these important groups of students. So when I first was looking at the Inquiry by Design work, I'll be honest with you, I was a little bit concerned, because it's extremely rigorous. It's very, very challenging, if you've had a chance to look at it. And one of the things that I found so powerful is a paradigm shift that Inquiry by Design encourages in teachers. Instead of having a teacher where everything is pinging off of us, Inquiry by Design turns that on its head and asks the students to utilize these really important 21st century skills, and to engage in conversation with each other in a collaborative community. That is something that I had hoped for my students, but Inquiry by Design demands it. And so I was wondering how my students would respond to this really strong paradigmatic shift. And I was thrilled to see that across all of my classes, have a very broad spectrum of students, broad skill level, broad socioeconomic status, and a really strong racial diversity, every student in my classes was successful with this curriculum. And what, and not just successful, like, yeah, it's okay, Ms. Beck. I had students who were on fire with this curriculum. We invited Brian Doyle, the man who wrote the essay that is featured in the Inquiry by Design unit that we piloted. And some of my students who previously were like, I don't know, whatever. They brought their units to Brian Doyle's presentation, greeted him like a rock star, and asked him to sign their units. So this, and I'm, I'm not making this stuff up. So, not only are there these little anecdotal elements, but I had students who said to me, wow, Ms. Beck, I feel so smart reading this essay. And as they were researching their own information, because of course, Inquiry by Design invites students to inquiry, and they find their own ways into these really rigorous and complex texts. So they were researching their own questions, and they said to me, did you know that people in college are reading this essay? I was like, wow, I didn't. And they're like, well, I'm only in seventh grade, but I'm already reading it, and I feel so smart. And how powerful for me as a teacher to have my students come to me and announce that they feel smart, particularly when so many of our students do not experience that, unfortunately, on a regular basis, when they're interacting with our curriculum. And I know that some people looking at this curriculum might wonder, how is it going to fit our vision of equity as a district? For me, as a teacher, in a predominantly students, in a classroom with predominantly students of color, that is absolutely at the forefront of my consideration. I want my students to feel like they can access curriculum, and I feel that that is a successful element of Inquiry by Design. I piloted one unit, however, Inquiry by Design is set up such that it has multiple units, and as a group, we can pick and choose which units we choose to work with. And I was really thrilled to see that almost all of the units have really strong, engaging pieces of writing from authors of color. So there are, really, there are powerful pieces by Chicano authors, there are powerful pieces by African-American authors, by Asian-American authors. It's something that I think is really going to tap into and welcome all of our students to feel like they see themselves reflected in the text, and also that they can feel challenged to expand their viewpoints. So I heartily recommend that you, that you support our suggestion in the adoption. And I'll say to you what I said to the other teachers when we were talking about this. It is a paradigm shift. It is going to look scary. Teachers are going to need support. But I think in adopting this, we are voting our hope and not our fear. Our students can do this. Mine did do this. And we need to have the strength and confidence that every one of our students can rise to this occasion. So I hope that, I hope that you'll agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was great to hear the student earlier testify about Inquiry by Design.
And we also have Hannah Borsier with us today.
So I also, I piloted actually both of the curriculums, and I was really happy that we made a decision to adopt the Inquiry by Design, for the same reasons that my colleague talked about. I, I work at Lincoln High School, sorry. Lincoln High School?
Lincoln?
Yeah. So, and I also found it to be very powerful for the same reasons. I felt like the kids were very engaged, they really enjoyed working with each other, they enjoyed being the experts themselves, looking things up themselves, and, and creating knowledge on their own without being led by the teacher. But I also do want to follow up, that I think we do need more training for teachers. I think it's excellent curriculum. I love that they're micro units, so teachers get to keep their, the curriculum that they love. But then they can, rather than having to adopt a whole new curriculum, they can do pieces and slowly adopt it, because it's, since it is such a, a change as a teacher, it's nice not to have to do it all at once. But I think it's really, really crucial, one of the things that we requested was to have extra freshman development, both by the company Inquiry by Design, but also to meet with each other, and to see how, how is it going? What are you doing? What's working? And then there's also, of course, a few elements that are, that are missing, that I think as a group, as of teachers, we can come up with solutions. But of course, we need time to be able to do that, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say a big thank you to our teachers who testified tonight, because they have taken time out of their schedules to be here, and it really speaks to their dedication, not only to their craft, but also to their students, and our students.
So as Assistant Superintendent Russo was talking about earlier, this is truly a representation of a collaborative effort that we represent teams of people who worked on this. And I think that that speaks well to the folks who just testified for us tonight, in terms of their collaboration with us throughout the pilot. It's really important to understand the why of the work. So when we're looking to see data and looking for evidence of the opportunity gap, we can find it. These are our second quarter grades, so what you're looking at are percentages of students who earned satisfactory marks, which are defined as C or better. So understanding the big picture of an adoption, especially one that's taken two years in process, it's, it's really important to kind of back it up and understand what the history looked like. So in two, in the year 2014, 15, CMAC was formed. It included all three of our departments represented here this evening. The first vision and guiding principles were developed in order to help inform the work. Then the Common Core State Standards were prioritized by each grade level. There was initial community engagement through open houses, then selection of pilot materials, invitation to teachers to join the pilot groups, and also the Novel Committee, which I'll talk about in a moment, and solicitation for recommended titles for the Novel Committee. So 2015, 16 is the pilot year. That's the one that we're currently in. There were four curricula that were piloted, two digital and two text-based. The two digital pilots that, that occurred were Light Sale and New Zella. And the two text-based pilots were Springboard and Inquiry by Design. The Novel Committee, which operated as a parallel process, helped to identify titles that they would recommend to add to the Core Works List. So when we look at this adoption, this adoption is actually operating a little differently than past adoptions. In past adoptions, you look for a In past adoptions, you look for a comprehensive core, and at the secondary level, it really takes the form of a textbook. And this adoption is really looking at much more of a balanced approach. So understanding and acknowledging that the text-based curriculum that was piloted is really a piece of the materials. It allows educators to be able to differentiate far better for their students than by using just a one-size-fits-all comprehensive core. So once the pilots occurred, there was more consensus meetings, offered feedback to the CMAC, the overall CMAC committee. And then we had a community engagement phase two, where we actually invited parents of the students who were involved in the pilot in to offer feedback. CMAC finalized the recommendation, and here we are, but the work is not done. So as Hannah so beautifully put earlier, this is not a finished process by any means. What we started with the prioritization of the standards needs to continue in terms of standards development. So what you see represented on this slide is really the subcommittee work that is left to happen. And this speaks directly to the needs that were articulated by teachers involved in the pilot. So as we were getting feedback, we wanted to make sure that we were honoring that feedback by identifying the work that still needed to be done. As we know in education, this is an iterative process. We are reflective lifelong learners, and that includes educators as well. So we are constantly revisiting and reflecting on the work that we do. So as we talked about a little bit earlier, this isn't just an adoption. We're thinking about standards, resources for those standards, building core curriculum materials for dual-language immersion programs, and developing essential standards-based resources for teaching and assessing those standards. Sounds like a lot of moving pieces, and that would be accurate. There are multiple content areas represented here. Digital versus print, balanced approach to curriculum, and of course, the novel committee fits into that balanced approach. And when we think about the digital component, we also think about what it means to equip a 21st-century classroom. So when we think about infrastructure, device allocation, being able to support the infrastructure once it's been put into place, those are all parts of those moving pieces. So there's a big question about who helped make this decision. We had a lot of collaboration, which we talked about a little bit earlier, with teachers and community members. Our community involvement included CMAC district representatives, CMAC community representatives, the novel committee, and then we also had a very strong collaboration with special education and talented and gifted programming. What we really set out to do was to identify not just what we needed through a language arts adoption lens, but we know that we have special groups in our classrooms that need other things, and we wanted to be proactive in identifying what those other things were. Extra scaffolds, enrichment, what does that look like within this context? And it's work that is not going to end after this process is over. It's work that that collaboration will continue so that we make sure that we are serving our kids. So our CMAC, this is our CMAC absent our district representatives. So 12 middle school representatives, and you can see administrators are represented, dual-language immersion, English, English as a Second Language, and English Language Arts teachers, similarly for high school. And we also had a library media specialist. So when we think about the facilitators, when we talk about the team that the three of us represent, you're looking at the team by these 11 facilitators. We helped to facilitate a discussion, and a discussion and thinking, but we did not, when we think about our role, this was really as facilitators, not as people who influenced or weighed in. Our curriculum evaluation tool had eight major categories that you see represented here. Attachment A includes the full tool with all of the criteria listed. This is a screenshot of what just one of the indicators, or one of the criteria had. So that tool, when we actually looked at the data, this particular graph represents an overall kind of large, big-picture snapshot. So when we look at the 612 glance, you can see that Springboard is represented by the blue, the checkerboard pattern is Inquiry by Design, and then each one of those represents the categories that are on the tool itself, starting with equity, reading, writing, speaking and listening, language, instructional supports, and assessment. And the line that's at the top represents the maximum for each of those categories. The other thing to note is that we didn't want to just rely on quantitative data, like through what's represented on that graph. Also in your informational packets, you have qualitative data, which came from that, that tool that you were looking at. There was a commentary side, because what we felt as a team, it was really important to capture, is as you go through the experience of piloting a curriculum, sometimes when you go back to reflect on what the experience was like, some things you may forget or leave out, and we wanted to try and, as best we could, capture what that experience was, so we had a very well-rounded and complete picture. Based on those processes for the English Language Arts Pilot and Committee work, this is our recommendation. Inquiry by Design, which is the text-based curricula, New Zella, which is the digital. And for high school, as Hannah actually mentioned earlier, it's really important to call out only as part of this larger context. So when we are thinking about the work that still needs to be done in a balanced approach to curriculum, this is what was captured in that discussion. So partnering with teachers to develop an equity toolkit and professional development for language arts, professional development support from the vendor, understanding what that curriculum looks like from a student's lens, specific strategies and scaffolding for how to facilitate and participate, enrich student-led discussions, and then looking at continuous embedded supports. A big part of this work is standards mapping and deconstruction, and being able to build rubrics and assessments around those deconstructed standards. It is one thing to read the standard, to prioritize it, and is another thing to deeply understand what it means for outcomes for our students. So that work is absolutely essential in being able to develop and deliver a balanced curriculum. So that list is represented by these four major categories: standards development work, assessments, professional development, and scaffolding and support resources. So we're going to take a closer look very briefly at each one. Standards development work includes deconstructing and mapping, also building rubrics and assessments based on the understanding that was, and the meaning-making that was done in the deconstruction process. Understanding professional development as a bridge to implementation. We know that when we, when we do a, work only a workshop-style professional development, we really see rates of 10% implementation. Understanding how embedded professional development works, teachers helping teachers, and then also looking at how, how do we create those learning communities so that we share that learning? Again, like Hannah was talking about earlier. So when we think about not only responsive, vendor-provided professional development, we're also looking at, well, how are we providing embedded professional development as people learn how to implement curriculum? And particularly, this really discussion-rich style of teaching that is very student-centered. Taking a learning temperature is really assessing for learning. So when we think about, how do we assess for learning? We look at teacher-developed formative and substantive assessments, things that are standards-based, connecting it to that inquiry-based pedagogy that we talk about, if that's included in Inquiry by Design, and then really looking at reading intervention and assessment for the secondary level. One of the biggest gaps that was identified throughout this process is that we very much, and this is a national issue, it's not unique to PPS or Oregon, that we have a lack of secondary intervention and assessment that we can see really working for kids. So it's working, it's working with teachers, collaborating with teachers, helping them with the tools and supporting them in developing that work to be really responsive to our kids. And not just looking at it from one program or one way of addressing the need, but really being responsive in that way. Scaffolding the learning is also a really big piece. So looking at, before I talked a little bit about special education collaboration and tag collaboration, and also collaborating with English as a Second Language Department, to really identify where are students going to need support, and building those supports ahead of time. We're trying to be as proactive as possible in supporting our students with being successful with the curriculum, and also identifying the assets and the strengths that they bring to the classroom to be able to call those out as well. So I talked a little bit earlier about the English Language Arts Novel Committee parallel process. So if you're interested in the timeline, the goal again was to add novel titles to the core works list. And then we have the timeline here. So it started in May 28th of 2015, an invitation for folks to participate in both the pilot and the novel committee. On June 12th, 2015, committee members are invited to recommend titles. And then September 11th, that invitation was actually expanded to all ELA teachers. The first committee convening was October 7th, where they finalized the list of considered titles, and then began the reading and evaluation process. In December, on December 1st, 2015, we actually had the final novel committee meeting as well. We tried to include student voice as much as possible in this process. So when we think about even the pilot evaluations, there were pilot student surveys that were involved in that. And also, within the novel committee context itself, we actually invited students to offer what they enjoyed reading, and invited students to read some of the titles that were on the recommended list. And with that, I will turn it over to my colleague, Michael Bacon.
Good evening. So this is a slide I often put up here and share when I'm making presentations about dual-language immersion. It's a long journey to biliteracy. It's not something that ends at K five, K eight. It's really a lifetime journey. And therefore, if our commitment is, and our goal in DLI is, that is the same as the district, and it's about closing the achievement gap, the opportunity gap that we have, especially for our emerging bilingual children. Our strategy is through this long journey, this going towards bilingualism, biliteracy. We know it's research-based. We've even presented in front of all of you, actually, our most recent results here in our own district, so we know it's not just something in another district or another state or somewhere else. We know it happens here as well, and the impact that it has. But it really takes that long-term commitment. And I have to say, I've been in this district 20 years, and I'm incredibly excited and thrilled because I see a huge paradigm shift in this process here that we're presenting today. And I credit that to some visionary leadership. Our senior director of ICA, Ewan Broly, stating that this is not an English Language Arts adoption, this is a language arts adoption for all the languages we teach in, all six of the languages we teach in. So to me, that is equity in action, and I'm really excited, and it's not just you, and there's a lot of folks, people sitting next to me, and others, the teachers, our TOSSAs, and the other leadership that's in the district, is that part of that, that it is inclusive of all the partner languages. And it's not just inclusion, but also differentiating both in the resources and in the process that we had to take to make this happen and be inclusive. We're not an afterthought, we're in there in the beginning. So I'm going to share a quote. We have a, I have a colleague over here, Marisol Kreitzer, often getting old, I have to put my glasses on now, but said that this work in the CMAC has been the most challenging work to date for me in DLI, but it's also been the most inclusive experience I've had in my 16 years in PPS. Oops, I changed mine.
Oh, sorry.
So we were fortunate to begin, we had subcommittees for each of our partner languages, Spanish, Chinese, Japanese, and Russian. We also have Vietnamese in the district, but we're only at first grade now, so we aren't going to have them at the 612 for a while. We had to differentiate, unlike the English Language Arts, what they had middle school and high school operating separately, we had to have them together because often our colleagues are isolated, and they needed to have partnership collaboration with peers. Their peers were often in that vertical alignment. So a Russian one teacher at middle school is hard to collaborate with other colleagues. So we, at our TOSSAs and the Dual Language Immersion and ICA, really collaborating with me. Our goal was a little bit different in some ways because we can't ask a bunch of vendors to show up with different options that we can pick from. We actually really had to go with the idea, we needed to find linguistically and developmentally appropriate core materials. We really had to go after, that was our goal, not necessarily to do the picking, but to really find those materials. Which then sets us up in this position where it's a little hard to pilot because we're not getting to pick and choose, we're having to find what works and really see if we can bring something together. So limited to no piloting in that process. Then what we did is we really talked about, what would be our common framework? Where were we going to have to land? What are going to be the things that are going to be the same that we can really work together with our, the English Language Arts component, or the pieces that we need to have separate? So as many of you know, that this year, we move into full implementation of the Oregon Seal of Biliteracy. And as a part of that, we have to simultaneously be looking at and measuring what we're picking, that our students are getting towards the rigorous standards, the Common Core State standards, as well as the actual proficiency guidelines, which are the nationally accepted world language standards. And we have to, there is crossover between those two, but we really had to look for both of those so that we move our kids, all of our kids, towards the Oregon Seal of Biliteracy. We also have IB and AP alignment that plays into this, so we had to look for materials that help support that in the partner languages. We know that simultaneously, we are, we have a, to support our EBs as well as our English-only students. And that we had to find linguistic, culturally, and developmentally appropriate materials, and that's not always easy, to find them to be appropriate. We also really carefully looked at our English side and are very excited about the IBD for the very reasons that have been presented already, and I won't go into all those again.
What's IBD?
Oh, I'm sorry. Inquiry by Design.
Yeah.
I know, we throw out so many acronyms. But we see that as an incredible, and I heard, was it Hannah? Talk about the ability to plug in and the access, and I think we're incredibly excited in that in this 612, there's a pedagogical framework that's being chosen, or being recommended that allows all of our students, all of our students, including those in DLI and EBs, to be able to plug into a pedagogical framework that works across those different languages. So that balanced with the specific needs for the partner language. So in our, in general, our recommendations for the partner language in this process is also around Inquiry by Design, IBD, unit development. Now, the company doesn't provide all the units, or any of the units, in the other languages. It's going to require us, this is where we differentiate, this is going to be the unit development, and we need to couple it with a really high-quality approach to language instruction and academic instruction, which is through the QTEL as a baseline training. For example, using National Geographic as a starting point, which is we're recommending, is something that is published in all those languages and has high-quality, rigorous informational text with lots of wonderful visuals and, and opportunities to plug in, and we use that as a potential article that we can collaborate across our partner languages using the IBD unit development. So then we have, in the recommendation, we also have partner language-specific textbooks to meet all of those specific needs, as I mentioned in the previous slide, and then, of course, in the novels, per two, per grade level, with a little bit of variation for per partner language in how we address the needs of the students. So we see as the essential supports to make this happen, the IBD and QTEL training coming together with the partner language unit development. We have DLI-specific writing instruction, that's going to need a separate subcommittee, but all the other subcommittee work would be aligned with what was already presented by Andrea. And then that's, the next two slides, I'm not going to spend any time because I can't even read all of them. But these are sort of the core, some of the core pieces that the subcommittee is recommending in the different languages. I think English is at the bottom. Yes. All right. So there we have it. Equity in action. I'm really excited that this day has come.
So as my colleagues have mentioned, we have really been collaborative in this process. And so as part of this, we have involved our teachers similarly to the DLI model. So we had had our ESL teachers come together, six through 12, also to collaborate around the adoption process, also involved in the CMAC as well. So it was really great for our ESL teachers to be involved in the prioritization of the ELA standards. So there was this kind of blending and morphing of understanding, not only having our teachers exposed to the ELA standards, but also we have new English language proficiency standards as well, which impact this work and our ELA teachers and our DLI teachers. So it was truly a collaborative process. Our teachers recommended piloting, Cengage or National Geographic Publishing, Inside and Edge. So Inside is the 68 curriculum, and Edge is the 912 curriculum. And we also use New Zella as the digital component of the pilot. There was also, we also There was also, we also piloted, it's not up there, but Step Up to Writing. So we took a look at these materials as resources. So instead of kind of looking at a comprehensive kind of box set of materials, we wanted to make sure that our teachers were equipped to look at these materials as, as resources to meet our students' needs and the standards that they need to attain. So for example, we, we really took a look at designing or using a unit plan template so that our high school teachers had used a couple of years ago and had created, using a backwards design approach, which really means that you're taking a look at what is ultimately the skill and the knowledge that I want my students to learn? And then how do we backwards plan from there? So how can we use this assessment? So our teachers designed an assessment based on this approach. And then they used the materials to complement that. Because we know that the needs of our students change, and we can't guarantee that Chapter One or Chapter Three is going to meet every student's needs. And a lot of times, in these comprehensive programs, there's just way too much stuff, too. So we really need to weed out what's important and what's not. And so that was our approach. We, at the end of the process, the teachers recommended that we adopt these three components. They also recommend having the professional development aligned to quality teaching of English learners, the QTEL that Michael had mentioned. And basically, it's a pedagogical approach based on sociocultural theory. So understanding practice and how, how it relates within a larger framework. So having said that, the new ELP standards, understanding the ELA Common Core standards, understanding all of these materials, will, will definitely take some professional development. And so we will be involved in a lot of the process with the ELA subcommittees that have been recommended. So our teachers, the DLI teachers as well. But we are also recommending a subcommittee for our ELD teachers to meet on a monthly basis so that they do have the skills in order to plan, not just teaching pages one to 10, 10 to 20, but kind of looking at these materials as a guide. And then, of course, we'll be working alongside our vendors in that process.
Thank you.
So as I talked about a little bit earlier, around the technology considerations for the 21st century classroom and being able to deliver digital curriculum, you heard that Newzella is our digital component. So when we think about, well, what does that actually mean when we talk about being able to deliver it? And in, in partnership with our IT department, we came up with a list of some things to just consider. So current classroom coverage, designed over seven years ago, which we talked about, and that really comes down to infrastructure. So when we're looking at this list, the three things that this list really includes are the infrastructure that we have in our buildings. When we, when we think about device ratios, that's included at the top of the second column. And when we think about being able to maintain that level of support, that's the third major consideration when we think about what's represented really in this list. So when we think about identified next steps, we talked a lot up here about collaboration within this process. But we, again, that's not a collaboration or collaborative effort that we want to end. We actually want to expand it. We really do, are very sincere about including special education, talented and gifted ed, and making sure that we have folks at the table who are really going to help us develop things to be responsive to our students. So knowing that and moving forward, we, we will plan on strategically delivering professional development for the selected material with the stated goal of impacting instructional practice and learning outcomes. And again, it's a reflective process. It is not a one-and-done kind of thing because we're constantly learning and having to go back and think about, okay, how did that go? What do we need to do differently?
Questions? Mike?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Going back to what the, what? Yes, we are. Going back to what the teachers were saying, that, you know, teacher supports are critical, and it seemed like one of the big teacher supports is professional development. And this seems like an enormous undertaking. So what is the, how do you budget for that? I'm trying to figure out what the, you've gone through the piloting, so now it's going to roll. And so it just, it seems like there will be a significant budget impact. And I'm wondering how you're balancing that with, you know, what the teachers said, which they need. Support's going to be a big deal. Are you going to be able to provide what they need? I mean, I'm just.
Short answer, yes.
Well, so, so that's good. And I guess, so then maybe I'll ask, how do you know, is it a yes because it's just a manageable investment? And, or we have less cost somewhere else and this isn't a significant cost?
So what I, what I'm going to do is, I am going to dance a little bit around cost because should the board see fit to approve this recommendation, we would immediately go into negotiations and we don't want to compromise that. So what I could tell you is we have allocations for the purchase and support professional development specifically for this adoption. And there will be ongoing pieces that we will prudently budget for and, for next year and subsequent years. So we have an idea of what it will cost and how we will manage that and develop it.
So just.
Can I ask a clarifying question? How, how much of that professional development will come through the vendor?
Well, that's, that, again, a component of the negotiation piece. We will rigorously negotiate with the vendor and extract as much professional development as it pertains to specific components or the development of those components as appropriate.
So just to clarify, the negotiation is, it isn't, this isn't, this is a negotiation with the vendor. It's not a union issue in terms of what the teachers want and what you need to provide.
No, it's with the vendor. It would be with the vendor upon approval.
I'm just really thrilled to see it. And it was great to hear the teachers and the students earlier talk about the excitement for it, which, of course, we all know that once you offer challenging curriculum to all kids and you scaffold it, they can all rise to that, right? I'm just, so I'm glad to hear EL and DLI here, too. I'd like to hear more about how special ed will be integrated with the process. Thinking about, you know, co-teaching models, kind of what's the plan? How, how will you go forward ensuring that kids will have access, particularly struggling readers and?
So in our preliminary conversations with special education representatives, that was the other thing. We wanted to at least get an idea proactively of what it is we're looking at to consider. Now that provided the approval moves forward, then we can actually really start digging into that collaborative work specifically around things like universal design for learning. So when we think about the different components that go into universal design for learning, one of the things that we had talked about with our special education TOSA that we were collaborating with was around the, the different access points and the different ways to communicate out things like assessment. So when we think about how that weaves into our structure, we're trying to be very intentional, that we do a lot of meaning-making upfront so that it doesn't fall to the teachers on the back end to try and figure out, how does universal design for learning work with QTEL, work with this and work with that? It's really trying to figure out how, where are those connections and be proactive about those connections so that we can be as effective as possible for our kids.
And can you talk a little more about the assessment pieces to this? So what does that look like?
That's a great question, and it's also one that's on the roadmap. So when we think about assessment specifically and being able to develop collaboratively with teachers' formative assessments, it's going to be very heavily based on that deconstruction of standards work that's going to happen, that's, again, on the roadmap.
So I guess my question is, I mean, that must be a component of the curriculum anyway. So you're saying that it still needs to be built out and developed to meet our needs? Or it's not a strong component of this curriculum or?
So I think with a balanced approach, like if we were to look at any curriculum that's a comprehensive core, one-size-fits-all, it's going to give you everything we need, you know, there's a little bit of a healthy amount of skepticism to that. So it's identifying what assessment options and components are built into the inquiry by design in Newzella programs. But it's also identifying where are the gaps and being able to fill in those gaps.
As Andrea said, it's intended to be an iterative process. So as we deploy and utilize the curriculum, we're going to realize what we need. So we constantly reflect, just like good teaching, and build those components out.
Great, and I am really excited to see it.
When was the last time we had a 612 curriculum adoption?
I believe it was 2007.
High time.
So, so I'm still wondering how long it takes to get to full utilization. I mean, it sounds like you're going to start to roll it out, you're going to learn from that. But is, I, I'm wondering, like, does it, like, in five years, everything, the whole thing's going to be online? And then how much of it depends on the money that's available to invest in it? I still don't quite understand what the rollout is and how much it costs or?
I think, are we authorizing investment in the full curriculum materials upfront, right? For next year? And then when you talk about a work in progress, you're speaking more to the approach among the teachers as the professional development and how we grow into the new framework. But our teachers can expect that they will have the materials and the technology supports that they need at the get-go, right?
Pardon me? Yeah, that's when the implementation would be. So what I can tell you in what it's not going to be. It's not going to be a purchase of a material, just a material, and a delivery of that material to the teacher, and then we forget about it. What we intend on doing is purchasing, delivering, developing, and reflecting. And we have put together a budget to anticipate all those aspects. And again, I'm overly simplifying.
Say another question. I was trying to understand the equity component of this. So there was, there was discussion somewhere in there about an equity toolkit, equity-based conversations in the classroom. And there's a lot of discussion now about culturally-specific curriculum. So just, I want to understand better, is when you talk about equity, are you talking about culturally-specific curriculum? What is, you know, where does that all, how does that all fit together? What are the components?
That's a great question because this idea actually emerged from a conversation with teachers at that, the pilot consensus meeting. There was a very strongly articulated need around developing support resources for teachers to facilitate conversation, equity-based conversations about race in the classroom. And knowing that there was a gap in support resources to be able to facilitate that conversation. So the work that, that idea emerged actually directly out of that conversation in order to say, hey, we heard your need, we understand how important this is, not only to talk about it on an organizational level, but also talking about it, being able to discuss it on a classroom level as well. So in terms of it being culturally-specific, I wouldn't speak to the fact of it being culturally-specific. It's, it's the resources intended to have that conversation where, where students can feel comfortable entering into it and teachers can feel comfortable navigating, or at least feel supported in navigating and facilitating that conversation.
And that's where I'm. Well, that's what I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to distinguish between having more inclusive dialogues among all the cultures in the room, but then that aspect of, you know, which I keep hearing about from students, you know, what we're reading, what we're learning about, doesn't reflect my culture. And so when you say you're going to have a new 612 language arts curriculum, I'm wondering how much of that is, you know, really different materials? And I'm not just talking about in a language immersion program. What component of that is culturally-specific?
So I'm, I'm going to go back to Larissa Beck's testimony at the beginning because she had actually spoken to the diversity of authorship represented in the different inquiry by design units. And we know that it's not all-inclusive. The idea also is through professional development to support teachers and being able to identify complex texts that are also responsive to their kids. Because not any one curriculum is going to offer something that's relevant to all kids. So supporting teachers and being able to identify not just relevant texts, but also complex texts that are rigorous.
Thanks.
So the novels that were included, though, aren't they also an attempt to represent the cultures of our children? And I really encourage, what did I read, someplace that there were two novels or?
Two novels per grade level.
Per grade level. So I know that Washington DC Schools has done a really interesting kind of, they have anchor novels for, I think, secondary that are really reflective, looking, taking their body of students, their cultures and languages, and then looking for representative novels. If novels weren't available, then smaller, you know, pieces of text that dealt with a smaller group. And I think that that's what has, that, the start here with those two novels, and I would encourage us to expand upon those again, to, to really be representative of the body of our kids. I have a list from the DC schools, it's just really interesting. Yeah, it's, they've done some really great work there.
I have one last question, since you were talking about novels and some of the challenges we had this year. So this all factors in, you know, all the new books we're going to need to buy for all the students. I mean, that's all part of the package. Every student has a textbook, there's enough choices to go around. We're going to maintain that volume of book so that we don't have shortages.
So that, I can speak a little bit to the Novel Committee piece of it. So the novels are being purchased and held centrally. So as class sets get checked out, it'll be done on a class set basis as opposed to every school has their own copy for their own student. Does that answer it?
Steve?
We got some questions.
First of all, I think it's wonderful. We had a great presentation and I really appreciated it. The Teaching and Learning Committee was really, really set the foundation for what we're talking about tonight. Helped me understand this a lot better. I realize we're in here with flags and balloons and shooting off firework because this is kind of getting down to the end. But I do have some questions, which I think are questions that people in the public would ask and maybe even some of our teachers ask. I don't want you to take them as a negative thing. I'm just wanting, I think we just could have answers on these things. And you have answers or you don't, I guess, because I have great faith in Mr. Rousseau's abilities here and his attitude, which is excellent, and so, and his educational philosophy, which I think is excellent. Question one is, do we need in the high school, a new adoption? And why do, why do we think we do? And, and what about teachers who use their own resources? Are we adopting for them and the book's going to sit on the shelves, we're going to pay for them? How are we approaching that particular question?
So in a balanced, a balanced curriculum approach, when we think about how do those resources that teachers have used in the past factor into this equation? I think that was one of the big things that when we think about inquiry by design is providing a piece of the materials and a piece of the curriculum. It doesn't provide all of it as a comprehensive core. And when we think about the new expectations for students with the new standards, and we think about the high level of rigor and also the speaking, the very strong emphasis on speaking and listening, when we're looking for a resource that's going to help support students in that, in those outcomes, inquiry by design is one of those things. And that was one of the things, actually, for the criteria that they were looking for overall when they were looking for curriculum to pilot, was looking for speaking and listening supports as well.
So what particular, if I'm a sophomore English teacher, teaching AP English or teaching regular English, I guess? I don't know what they call it. What pieces am I going to have new next year available to me for my students?
It's contained in your presentation, the specific materials.
What pieces will I have?
So when we're looking at the curriculum itself in terms of the, how that, how the curriculum is structured, we're looking at a teacher's guide. So it actually contains different ideas of how to structure instruction. And then it also includes student books. So when we're looking at student texts in order to help support students in annotating and marking up text, which is also another very large emphasis in the new student outcomes and standards, so that will be included as well. So when we think about, again, it's a piece and that's, like, that's just the text piece. There's also the digital piece with Newzella. So when we think about the emphasis on informational text, that's also been a pretty large gap in a, in a lot of different places, not just PPS. So when we think about being able to support teachers in, with specifically informational text resources, that's another piece that's added into that balanced approach.
So if I'm a sophomore English teacher, I'm going to receive a text and I'm going to receive an instruction booklet?
So it'll be a guide, a teacher's guide.
A guide, okay.
Yep.
A guide to the things in the text? Or a guide beyond things in the text?
It's how to structure the student-led discussion around the text. So in a traditional textbook, what you would normally find are things like an activity, five questions at the end of a chapter. You might have some sidebar things to add extra information. Really, when you're looking at the student texts, you're looking at text and students are creating the meaning around that text. The teacher's guide helps to support and walk teachers through, leading students through that learning.
What percentage of your class, your 180 days, say, it's not that many, but that's just, it's always an easy figure to work with. What percentage of those days would I be in if I was, had a 50-minute sophomore English class? What percentage of my days would I be in discussion mode?
It's a really great question, and I think it's one that's probably best answered by our teachers in the classroom because there might be some classes, even as the same teacher of the same prep in the same building, I might have classes that are moving at a quicker pace and some classes at a slower pace.
I mean, what do we anticipate? A teacher spending how much of their 180 days? What percentage of their time would they spend in Inquiry by Design mode?
So when we think about percentages, about how it would break down in terms of instruction, it also depends on some of the other pieces that teachers are using to build their balanced approach. So if, within Inquiry by Design, again, we won't know the number, like, when we talk about if you're asking specifically number of units, we won't know that until after the negotiation, how many we have access to. But when we think about how does that play out in a balanced approach, it'll be partly the literature and the nonfiction that's included in Inquiry by Design, partly coming from Newzella, partly coming from another resource that a teacher may have been using in the past. So in terms of an exact percentage, it's, it's a hard number to kind of land on because it really depends on the kids, the teacher, and the setting.
What, you get one, you're tired of me questioning, then you can come back to me later. Because I still have quite a few, and I think they need to be asked in public over this very, very important topic. But what about, the first paradigm shift that I went through was in 1969 for modals. Modals were interesting. Anybody remember modals? Nobody's that old, are you, no modals? That were the paradigm shift of 1969. And it always has scared me ever since when I hear paradigm shift. For instance, let's take a look at my second question, which is grammar. How do we plan to teach grammar in the sixth grade with this particular? What's the plan for teaching grammar to children in the sixth grade? Because we know, if you look at it, and you guys probably more, way familiar, more familiar with the Common Core state standards than I am, they're pretty bad in the sixth grade, the, the standards surrounding grammar. I mean, they're horrible, terrible. They don't have any idea what they're doing. And they lump, they lump the whole thing, everything that went before. You're supposed to teach everything that went before. How do we tell, what's our plan for teaching grammar in the sixth grade or seventh or eighth, say?
So I think that when we look at the language standards specifically and the writing standards, and we look to see where does grammar and conventions live? It lives in those two particular categories. When we think about the instruction that surrounds that, we've identified that as a need that teachers need support with. So there is a subcommittee, a work group, that's on the roadmap to develop resources around writing instruction, including those language and writing standards.
Do we have a grammar section in these, in this adoption? Sort of grammar section in the adoption? In other words, we have a textbook that teaches, that has grammar structure in it that we can teach, that our teachers can teach from?
Uh, no, there is not a grammar book, that's it.
But it would be, it would be going off of the Common Core standards at each level.
Yes, but they're not, yeah.
The deconstruction of that and then the meaning-making and the process that is directed by the Common Core standards from each grade level.
And student-centered in terms of being responsive to what, what gaps students come in with because that's the other thing to consider.
So we have a grammar assessment we're planning to use?
The writing. So when we think about the writing instructional support resources and the assessment work group, those are two different work groups that we're looking at. And also considering where does assessment live in those two places? So we have formative assessment, which will also include formative assessment around writing. And then the writing instructional support resources, which would hopefully also include some formative assessment in there as well. And it's not just thinking about writing from a diagnostic fashion, although that, when we think about, okay, looking at students' writing and identifying strengths, yeah.
Okay, so we have a, something, we have some structure within this that deals with grammar so kids can edit their work according to grammar structure?
Yeah, and that's, one of the big pieces is part of the professional development because one of the things with Inquiry by Design as well is studying student work. So when we think about, when you look at a student's writing and you're able to identify the areas of strength, starting with the areas of strength and then identifying perhaps two focus areas that you would really help students improve and grow in.
How do they get, if you're looking, if you're teaching grammar off the student work, which I know a lot of teachers try to do, how do you, how does our, how do our students get a systematized understanding of grammar? Which is a system, it's very much like fractions or mathematical, basic mathematical things. How would they get a systemized understanding of grammar from their own work? I mean, they don't, they're not going to, A, have that much work. I mean, you have 30, if you get 30 pieces of student work in a year, it's an incredibly large amount of student work in a year. I mean, unbelievable writing if you go through, we know that, we know how it all works. Over 30 pieces of writing, you're not going to have a systematized structure of grammar.
So are you talking like a scope and sequence of, so maybe where you're going with...
I'm talking about that, how we're guaranteeing
Yeah.
that we're teaching systemic grammar since it's not done in the Common Core well. It's done very poorly. If you look at sixth grade, I mean, you're talking about possessive, possessive pronouns and a couple other deals. I'm just trying, you know where I'm going. Chris knows where I'm going. I'm just trying to see if we...
They're good questions.
If we put it into, if we put it into our thinking around this, this particular inquiry by design.
What it won't be is a separate grammar book with activities. I know what you're referring to. So I can tell you explicitly, it will not be that. I'm going to refer back to the, to the subcommittee. A lot of it is going to be delivered through the writing instruction. And there will be moments as they are inquiring for the teacher and the child to explore grammar piece. But to map it out or to talk about how we're going to support it, we're going to refer that back to the, to the subcommittee group and how we pull that out in reading, in the inquiry part, but also in the writing. But there is no separate grammar book.
Et cetera, but there's really no separate...
Just a second, Steve, what was...
What I was going to say is, I agree that there doesn't need to be a separate grammar piece. A little bit of, I agree too with what Steve's saying. It harkens back to remembering the whole language time and that when we had those, what were they, mini lessons? That would be kind of birthed from what you saw in student work. But having children that went through that process know that there were big gaps. So just care, we've done this before, we've been here before. And making sure that we're really carefully watching for that so that it's not just hit and miss depending on, as you say, evaluating, you know, massive pieces of work to see what our next mini lesson's going to be, just...
Understood.
Did you have a question still, Pam? No, I don't have a question. I have a, of course.
So just thinking back to one of the questions that Steve had around what teachers were going to have. I'm wondering if as you're putting this all together and as you've rolled it out to the people who are working on the pilot, if some of them have found that, that, you know, they've been working with certain texts or books for a certain period of time. And I understand that. But would, would this not provide us an opportunity to help diversify, especially culturally diversify, some of the materials that the teachers, who have been teaching for a long time and using the same stuff? So they have an opportunity to, to expand and find, and find new things and of new interest and hopefully more culturally diverse materials? Is that, would that also, are you anticipating that as well?
Yes, especially with the professional development piece around identifying complex texts. It acknowledges the fact that there will need to be other texts that are brought in and supporting teachers in being able to do that effectively and efficiently because speaking from experience as a high school English language arts teacher, it can take hours to find the perfect text. So figuring out how do we make that effective and efficient?
Great, thank you.
Steve, did you have some more questions?
Yeah, I'm on number three. What about, what about kids who are behind in like the sixth grade? Say they're a couple, three, four grade levels behind in reading. And one of the things some of them need, basically, I mean, hate to say it, but some of them just messed up on their phonics, never got them. Can't make out words, certain words. They don't, and it makes it so difficult for them to read to some degree that they don't. So what do we got, you know, what's our plan here to approach? Do we have an phonics assessment in this adoption? Do we, what's our plan for those kids that are two or more, three grade levels behind in reading?
That also comes down to the work group and the subcommittee around reading intervention and assessment. So, and we've identified that as a definite need. So when we look, take a step back and kind of look at a secondary level, what's, what's needed at a secondary level? And how do we target that intervention and instruction so that it's effective for students? First, it needs to come down to the assessment piece. So when we look at using assessments for the correct purposes, using screeners as screeners, diagnostics as diagnostics, and then being able to make a decision based on that information, how to best serve those students. Also looking at, we've actually started a conversation with our bilingual speech pathologist to talk about how, when you're acquiring another language, how does that play a role in, in reading and how those diagnostics function? So we're hoping to expand that conversation as well. What we wanted to hesitate from doing, because there's a lot of good thinking and work that's been started around this already at the secondary level. We really want to support the teachers who have started that work and building out a framework for them to be able to operate with inside, inside of that framework, rather than trying to impose a structure on top of that.
Well, I don't mean imposing a structure so much as making the structure available if the teacher wants it. Do we have a, do we have assessments that are going to help assess the actual reading difficulties of sixth and seventh and often eighth grade kids? And, and then do we have something that we give? Because that's where, that's where I know that we're going very intelligently in the K5. We're building that structure in. So is, how is it built in here?
So we're working to identify which assessments would best serve which purpose. Right now, an example of some of the assessments that we have available include the EZCBM as a screener.
So we have one language though.
Exactly. And so that's why, that's one that's available right now. So figuring out how do we expand that and seeing what other tools are available. And similarly with the diagnostics. So that, like, starting that conversation with those in mind as, in terms of the function that they serve, but knowing that that can't really be the only assessment when we're thinking about other, assessing in other languages.
Do we have any assessments?
Steve, I think Paul has a question.
Oh, you're jumping around, okay.
Thank you. I think this is just wonderful. I do have one question about budgeting. Many things in here about digital delivery. Do we need any investment in technology in order to be able to implement this?
I do. So to, to meet the needs of our, of this curriculum and what, and what our kids need to do with this curriculum, there constantly needs to be an evaluation where we are with technology and subsequent upgrades. So are we at that aspirational level? No. Do we know what that needs to be? Yes, as Josh clearly told me. Have we been talking about it extensively? Yes.
Is it in the, is it in your budget request for this year?
The aspirational piece? No. But building blocks two? Yes.
So it has, so in what you gave us, it talks about IT. But you're not including it in your budget request?
So the adoption itself, does it include IT components?
Beyond the, like, Newzella and those digital components? Are you talking about infrastructure and hardware? Like...
Yes. Yes.
I don't believe in, I don't believe so.
I think there's something in here about...
No. Not those, those key foundational pieces, no.
You highlighted it as a need.
So there's a, there's a comment in here about fixed labs and not classroom embedded equipment to support core curriculum?
Yeah.
Is that, am I thinking of, are you thinking of something else?
No. Josh, would you like the comment? Yeah.
Sorry.
This has been an ongoing discussion.
No, I think it's really important because we, we hear constantly about the inadequate computer, computers that we have, lack of computer labs, computer, just all around computers. So go for it, Josh.
Good evening, Josh Klein, Chief Information Officer. This could turn into a pretty lengthy discussion, but in, in short, there were some, there's been ongoing conversations, some very detailed conversations about what we need to do to our technology infrastructure to make this successful in the long term. Those conversations are, are ongoing. There was a slide in this presentation that listed some of the concerns that we, we currently have. Our wireless infrastructure was, was not designed to support one-to-one computing. With that said, this Newzella product is not, doesn't stream video, you know? So it's not an extremely, it doesn't require a lot of bandwidth. So we have, I think, still some more learning to do about what we really need to do to accommodate this tool at scale. There's that piece. And then there's also the piece of how we're going to get devices in the hands of students to actually use the tool. And, and that will, we have some pretty high density of equipment in certain, in certain places and not in others. So this, there is a significant investment that needs to be made to do this right. But we don't necessarily have to get there immediately.
But we would have to get there for every teacher we're asking to do this work.
Correct.
Correct.
Right, Steve, did you have some other questions?
Yes, I do. I have the same one I just asked, which isn't an IT question. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate it though, Josh. Going back to, do we have a test? I understand that there's different parts of reading that are all critically important. But I want to go back to the phonics part. Do we have a test where we find the holes in kids' phonics for all our children, sixth, seventh, or eighth grade?
So diagnostics that test for decoding and fluency are, I believe, the diagnostics that you're referring to when it comes to phonics?
Decoding would be the one.
So an example of a diagnostic that we have access to, but again, it's English only, is the San Diego Quick.
Do we, do we plan to use that, like, with all our sixth graders and seventh graders, particularly in those schools that are 200, have 200 kids that are two or more grades, levels behind?
So in the preliminary data analysis that we've been doing with our research and evaluation department, we've identified actually that the numbers in terms of the need for decoding and fluency, like who's scoring at risk or at some risk on the EZCBM, are actually lower than what we had originally thought. So when we think about being able to test students using a diagnostic after they've been identified using a screener, that's what, one of the processes or flow, workflows that we're looking at right now. But again, that would be decided within the contact... But again, that would be decided within the context of the reading assessment and intervention work group, the subcommittee. That's just an example of the workflow.
This next comment is a comment, not a question.
Keep it brief, please.
The, we, libraries play a big, huge role in the sixth through 12th grade reading, particularly sixth through eighth, huge role. So I'm going to put in a plug again for having, for, in the name of heaven, we get new library books into libraries which haven't had new books in some cases until that little amount we put in there last year, haven't had it for nine or 10 years. We need to have decent libraries for children to get to and read. That's the comment. Okay, let's go back to the question then. The next question is, how does this deal with writing? In other words, how does this particular deal with, I don't mean handwriting, I mean writing things? Children write things out and teachers read them and talk about them and comment on them and they read them to each other, their writing. How does this?
So written student assessment?
No, written period. How much writing can we expect teachers to do? Teaching, writing, how much teaching of writing can we expect? Is it daily in this program, do you think? Do kids write daily? Do the kids write once a week? Do they write long things? Do they write short things? How much of that is a teacher going to correct? If you ran the program that you're talking about here in an average way?
So I think that there is a couple of things to consider. One of the things is assessment for learning and what form that takes. And that could take a written form. So if we're, if we are assessing a reading standard in a written form, that is one way. Speaking and listening is another way. So in terms of the variety of assessments, I think that writing definitely is a part.
I don't mean assessment, I, I'm sorry. I mean the actual teaching of how do kids, how much are they going to write? Are we going to write more in this? Because a lot of times what's happened in a lot of our classrooms, no offense to those teachers who do it, but we're not writing enough. We're nowhere near writing enough, you know, because what happens when you write, then you, and you know this, when you write and you have your kids write, you got to do something with it, which takes your time. So a good way to save your own personal time, where we have all these overloaded teachers, is to not have children write them much. But children need to be writing a lot. So does this address that?
So in terms of specific writing, explicit writing instruction, there are pieces embedded within the curriculum that do offer that, as well as the writing instruction subcommittee that will be developing work around that. And also that is writing for the purpose of evaluating and learning to write. There is also writing to learn and evaluate in other contexts such as the reading standards as well. So just kind of understanding, when we think about writing, it serves multiple purposes and being kind of clear about that.
Okay, Steve, I'd like to get to our resolution here in the next few minutes because we have another big issue tonight to still consider.
That's nice, but I sure, I have a couple more questions.
Do you have another question?
I have more than another question that I planned to ask. If we want to fight about it, we can fight about it. I just soon go and ask the questions in this particular forum with these particular people.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much.
Proceed, but let's do this quickly so we can get to enrollment and transfer.
Be nice if we would shuffle it, but I don't think we need to. Reading teachers? Do we have anything in the budget for reading teachers? Do we need any more reading teachers out in those classrooms where we have 200 kids, two or more grade levels behind? Is there anything, obviously it's not in this proposal, but suppose you put two reading teachers out at one of the middle schools with a lot of kids behind, is this, are they able to use this to do that type of work if we put in some reading teachers out here?
Part of the development that we're looking at with the reading intervention, intervention and assessment subcommittee and work group is actually around being able to embed support structures and instruction within a general ed context. So when we look at a tier one, tier two, tier three student, tier three being needing advanced phonics instruction and support, identifying what materials we have available to us to possibly embed the instruction, and then looking at other alternatives, should that not be the case to respond to students' need?
So is that a reading teacher answer? Was that a yes or a?
Not a reading teacher, no. Not within the context of a specialist per se, but being able to support teachers through professional development and resources in that endeavor.
Thank you for that answer. Next question is, when you, when I looked at your charts, inquiry by design was, was rated lower in writing and springboard was rated higher in, I mean, lower in instructional supports. And that seemed to be about the only two differences? So how did you weigh off, what is the lack of instructional supports in the inquiry by design? Let's just leave it at that, I guess.
So when we think about the different scaffolds that are needed, that was one of the conversations that stood out, which is why there is a subcommittee working on scaffolding and support resources, because that was an identified need as based on the data and also on the qualitative data as well around the commentary that was included on the evaluation sheet. In addition, when we, when we think about any curriculum claiming to be a perfect curriculum, and then the reason why we piloted is to identify where those gaps are so that we can address them. And that's why those subcommittees were, are proposed, so that we can actually address them.
Last question. Was there much of a bandstand effect on the, on this particular choice? You know, the bandstand effect where people, somebody gets on it early and then everybody jumps on in the bandstand to go around and you don't get the real solid questioning of what's the difference because everybody's pushing for the one? Or did you see much of that in your?
There was a very in-depth and intense discussion in our final CMAC meeting, and the recommendation package that you see before you is actually the culmination of hours of discussion and work and identifying what work still needs to be done in order to have a true responsive curriculum for our students.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. I'm very excited about the directions we're going here. I think it's wonderful.
Does anyone have any further questions?
Even if my friends on the school board don't appreciate the questions.
I thought we had a very...
We didn't have them in the committee.
We did have a very robust discussion in our teaching and learning committee, which was great.
And I'd just like to say you guys did a great job presenting here tonight and having multiple voices represent the process. It was really exciting, so thank you. Great presentation.
Yeah, thanks for your patience. Appreciate it.
And also that it's not to be taken for granted, that you are all united in bringing your different spheres together in this effort. That's pretty exciting. The board will now consider resolution 5214, grades six through 12, language arts curriculum materials and adoption. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Director Anthony moves. Director Esparta Brown seconds the motion to adopt resolution 5214. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, the board will now vote on resolution 5214. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5214 is approved by a vote of six to one, with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will now consider open enrollment and interdistrict transfers. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this issue?
Tony Magliano, who's our chief operating officer, and Judy Brennan, our director of enrollment and transfer, will present this report.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Smith, in your board packages, you still have a staff report and resolution on open enrollment. And as you're probably aware, by March 1st of each year, the board needs to declare whether we're going to participate in the program and allow students from outside our district boundaries to transfer in. And Judy Brennan, our director of enrollment and transfer, is going to walk you through that process and present our recommendation.
Thank you. Good evening. I was almost inspired to sing from an earlier presentation, which was, it was a while ago, but it was, as a boundary director, you don't get that very often, so, but since I have a cold, I'll just speak it swiftly. And that is that typically Portland Public Schools has opted out of the open enrollment process. We have other robust forms of transfers for our students here in PPS. We have, last year, a new set of policy changes regarding transfers that made it more explicit, the reasons for transferring between neighborhood schools for our resident students. So the open enrollment process actually would work outside of such a system and present a really different standard for transfers. So it's something that we haven't participated in in the past. However, we do think this year is a great opportunity to participate in open enrollment in a very limited way. And that is to reinforce enrollment at two of our immersion programs that are in east Portland, in northeast and southeast Portland, that both have a small amount of room for non-resident students, that have strong interest from non-resident students, and where we have seen in the past, families who live in other districts interested in the programs who haven't been able to work their way through the very complicated standard interdistrict process. So for all these reasons, we think that open enrollment would be a good choice for Portland Public Schools for the 16, 17 school year. And with your permission, we would like to open 20 kindergarten slots for Vietnamese immersion, which is at Roseway Heights, as well as 10 open enrollment slots for their first grade program. And then we'd also like to open, excuse me, we'd also like to open 20 kindergarten slots for the Russian dual-language immersion, which is at the Kelly School, and five first grade slots for that program as well. So that's our request for you tonight, and we're happy to answer. Let me just say really quickly to reinforce that. With your approval, we would open a process next week. Non-resident families would have a month to apply. We would work with community partners, especially those who work very specifically with families who speak these languages at home, to try and draw interest and make the application process as simple as possible. We would receive applications by the first of April and process those after we finish our resident lottery, which is right now open to our PPS resident students. So non-resident students wouldn't be placed above resident students. And then probably in the next four to six weeks, we will be back to you with more information about how we intend to have our standard interdistrict transfer process, which will happen after open enrollment.
Do we have any questions? Paul?
I would just like to make a comment. Ms. Brennan previously came and presented on this to the business and operations committee, answered a great many questions there very thoroughly. We were completely satisfied and recommended it to the board unanimously, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other, Steve?
How do they come up with the numbers? They seem pretty randomized. Ten, five, 20.
They are rounded to make it easier to describe to the people out there who are interested, but they are based on what the current enrollment is in the kindergarten classes at Vietnamese immersion and at Russian immersion. So we looked at how many kids are there, and we looked to see how many it would take to make our best possible use of those teachers. So if none of these slots would require additional teachers than what we would allocate for the programs anyway, they just allow the classrooms to be a little more full.
Are there any children that live within our school district who won't be allowed to go to these programs based on people, kids coming in from the outside?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Pam?
Yes. Good evening. Good evening. Just a couple of questions about these, Judy. The Vietnamese dual-language immersion program, is that doubling that program then? I mean, is that what we're trying, so it, it currently has one strand per, what has, what has it got?
No, ma'am. It's currently two strands.
Two strands?
At each grade level. It's a new program.
Right.
And as you know, it's a program that may be relocating as part of our enrollment balancing in the next year to two years. So we know that there's some families out there who are interested but haven't made the commitment because they're not sure where it's going to be. However, at the same time, we have non-resident families who would be driving to the program wherever it's located.
Right.
Yeah, so this isn't adding teachers or sections, it's simply...
I got it.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm surprised is all when I saw it on the list because the community demand for this was so huge, I can't figure, I'm surprised that we're trying to fill 20 slots. That's a lot in a program that people were demanding. So I hope we're reaching out to those partners who were in here telling us how much they wanted the program. So that'd be great. And then the other one, question I had was with regard to Kelly, what's the percentage of non-resident people in that program now?
It's approximately two-thirds at this time.
Is non-resident?
That's correct. The new principal at Kelly has a strong commitment right now to recruiting across her region. As we know with both of these programs, the populations that have the strongest interest in it because of their own heritage, culture, and language have shifted pretty dramatically as part of gentrification. So when the Russian program was cited there several years back, it was at a time when the Russian Ukrainian community was commuting, was moving further out. And we see the same.
I remember.
You heard a speaker earlier tonight with concerns about loss in population at Widmer and Woodman and Widmer. Similar populations to those that would be probably interested in this program but may now be moving across district lines.
Yeah, it just concerns me, and it has for a couple of years, because I've seen that number going up, up, up of non-resident students in the program at the same time when we have space constraints at Kelly for the neighborhood program. So I'm wondering if it might be more to our benefit to find our colleagues in other school districts where these people are actually living and encouraging them to build a program so that, I mean, if the people aren't living here anymore, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me that we continue to support the program.
It's a good discussion.
Yep. And I think, yeah, thank you, Tony. I think it's worth discussion. Did you?
That's all for me. Thank you.
Any other questions? The board will now consider resolution 5215, open enrollment transfers for 2016, 17 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Anthony moves. Oh, do I have a second?
I will.
Pam? Director Anthony moves, and Director Noel seconds the motion to adopt resolution 5215. Is there any discussion? Ms. Houston, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion on this resolution? Did you want to make any kind of amendment or proceed with this plan for...
I just think that we need to get into a discussion about the Russian program and we need to figure out why our community is not coming forward for the Vietnamese program. And I'm sure the staff will do a great job at that.
The board will now vote on resolution 5215. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. I forgot to say yes. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5215 is approved by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The board will now consider the remainder of the business agenda, already having voted on resolutions 5213 and 5215. Board members, are there any items you would like to pull for a separate discussion and No. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda? Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Director Anthony moves, and Director Noel seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on the business agenda? No. Seeing none, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
All right. All right. This meeting, this meeting is adjourned. The next meeting of the board will be Tuesday, March 8. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. Nice job.